Okay, we're going to open the regular meeting for the city, the regular council meeting for the City of San Clemente. And of March 21st, 2023, we're going to start with closed session. Do we have any comments before we?
We do have speaker cards.
Okay.
First up is Brad Malamud, followed by Concerned Resident, followed by AQ.
I'll try to be short. Hi, Council. The item, the first item where you attach the complaint, I didn't know that at the time, is still required to name the plaintiff when the city knows who it is and the person knows they have a complaint. So Scott again buried the name by attaching something. That's not legal. The public has a right to know who the plaintiff is, and that's the Brown Act, and he knows the law. But following it, that's a hard thing for him. Neither party's named neither, but it's been a continuing problem, and I hope the new law firm you have decides to follow the law. With regards this, if, I hope that you guys read the complaint. Because if you read the complaint, you'll know that if filed, it's going to be successful. And if it's successful, the minute you lose, all the other neighbors are going to sue, and the city will be out millions of dollars in damages and attorney's fees. Why would you subject the city to that kind of problem? You know, the city closed the courts at San Luis Rey because the neighbors complained, but they didn't close them at the same time at San G. Why? It's the same noise. The city did an initial study and found decibel levels as high as 100 plus. Then they go out and spend, I think, $25,000 for an absolutely bogus study. This, this, this person, this company, found that if you play pickleball, the noise is five decibels less than ambient noise. In other words, it has the properties that if you play pickleball, you reduce all the other outside noise. That's impossible. They couldn't explain it, they said. Well, if you can't explain it, then why are you posting a study? That's your job. It was, it's crooked. Plus, they didn't even mention pitch, which is even worse than volume. So this study was worthless, as most studies the city pays for are. So I think you need to avoid the lawsuits to save money. I think you need to close the pickleball courts tonight. I think, though, there are alternatives. I can name you a few, and I don't even know anything about it. The community center indoors, because the Boys and Girls Club, it used to be used when it's available. You could probably cut a deal with Lifetime Fitness to use a few of their tennis courts, and maybe the people will, people have to pay, but there won't be members. You could use Staples, the old Staples, which is huge. You could use maybe inside the outlets, there's a few closed facilities there. You can use church, uh, that open venues like, like the one at the community center. That hasn't been explored. If it has been explored, it hasn't been implemented. Why? It's been months, and we know that the new courts are at least a year, maybe two, maybe three years off. So this is something you shouldn't do, and inviting lawsuits, why would anybody do that? This just doesn't make any sense to me. So please, for the, all the residents of that area, please close those courts down and vote for that tonight.
This is our BP and R Director's recommendation to Council to determine the replacement of playground equipment at San Gregorio Park. And it's saying that it is categorically exempt from the provision of the California Environmental Quality Act, and for Council to direct staff to file an exception with the state clearinghouse. Where's the one for installation of pickleball courts in San Gregorio Park? Where is it? Last year, Councilmember Ms. Ferguson asked our city attorney, Mr. Smith, if the state's CEQA requirements were met before installing pickleball courts into city parks. He gave no answer. Our interim city manager, Mr. Joyce, was asked the same question. He gave you no answer. Over two years, I requested our BP and R Director, Ms. Wiley, to provide the exception staff was given and a copy of her notice of exception filing before installing pickleball courts in the city-owned and operated parks. She refuses to answer. Well, it's high time they answer and admit that they knew a CEQA was required, but chose to violate the law. It is time they answer. Hey, Siri, how many days has it been since January 1st, 2019, until today? Hey, Siri? Well, she's not answering. How many days has it been since January 1st, 2019, until today?
It was 1,540 days ago.
Yeah, guys, 1,540 days ago that the city installed pickleball into two city-owned parks without a CEQA, without a noise impact study, without a traffic impact study, without a parking impact study. When San G was built, the CEQA requirement required that the city place all high-usage activities along the freeway side of the park. Why? So that the residents on Via San Gregorio's quality of life would not be impacted. What has the city done? Installed eight pickleball courts as close to residents as possible. I've done everything with my power to get the city to rectify this without litigation. I provided the city with at least six suggestions that could provide temporary pickleball play while the city gets the courts built in speed. None have been acted upon. It appears you are hell-bent on a lawsuit. I don't want to sue the city. I want my quality of life, and I want the city to quit violating laws that they have done for over five years now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a, a motion at this time and ask that City Manager Andy Hall come back to us on April 4th with some short-term solutions he may have?
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it. Relative to alternative pickleball.
Exactly. Okay, do we have a third for support for this, the city manager? Okay, the motion is James, second is Cabral, and a third to allow for report is Mayor Protem No Block.
It's not a motion.
Is that?
It's a recommendation. Takes three for a staff report.
Is that, is that what you were looking for?
Yep.
Okay. All right, do we have any other comments? Looks like we do.
One final comment. AQ?
Hello, Councilmembers and staff. Uh, City Attorney, um, I'm, I'm, it's wonderful when two public speakers come up, and they point out the main issues and provide solutions to the city council members and staff. I think that's really wonderful. But I'm really concerned about what a concerned citizen said, that there was no, uh, that this pickleball courts at San Gregorio were done without CEQA, without a traffic study, without parking study as well. I mean, we've, City Attorney should know this, since we, we want, you know, that was the requirements of, of toll roads and Las Matas Parkway Extension and La Pata. I mean, we know that. But I'm really concerned about, when I looked at the closed session item, and there was a link to the anticipated litigation, and there says it's number two cases, but there was only one within attachment. And I'm wondering why that was. Was it retaliatory? Because it's never been done before. So I'm really concerned why that was done. And it was my understanding that a concerned resident forwarded that to you in an email for the city council members to catch up, to see what the problems were. Had no idea that this concerned resident was going, that, that form was going to be posted on the back in the city council hall, nor was it going to be attached. And I was really concerned about it over the weekend. And so I just want this retaliation to, to stop, because it shouldn't have been attached. If we're going to attach all litigation, then let's have all the litigation posted on our city webpage regarding the Santa No Fray Coalition, regarding the toll, the toll, the TCA, or the litigation regarding that, because, you know, there's, there's an issue of transparency, or is it an issue of retaliation? Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Have, no more comments?
No more comments.
I'll make a motion to recess into closed session. Second? That motion is James, second is No Block. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Okay.
Ah.
Everybody ready? Y'all ready up there?
Yeah.
Oh, where's, where's Scott?
All right, we're gonna open the regular business meeting for a city council meeting of the city of San Clemente of March 21st, 2023. I'm gonna call the meeting to order here. I do wanna say a few words just as we get started. As you've probably seen, we have, we had a situation at, at the Buena Vista, the 1500 block in our town, and we had a, a little, little landslide. And I think, and we wanna keep in our, in our hearts, all those residents and property owners that have been affected. We wanna thank our public safety professionals, like our sheriffs, deputy sheriffs back there, and our firefighters for getting on the scene, and we wanna, yeah. And, and keeping people safe, and, and also our incredible staff from our city manager all the way down to the engineering department for stepping up, getting out there in the rain, helping people, and we've got, I guess, it's incredibly heartening to see that community pulled together, of residents and property owners, and kind of work together to, to put, put their best foot forward. It is a resilient bunch, and they're gonna get through this, so I just wanted to say a few words for them. It's just a, it kind of, we're talking about our soccer team tonight, it's a team in San Clemente, and it was great to see the team pulled together, you know, to help everybody else out during that. So, let's keep all of those folks in our, in our hearts and our minds, though, as we, we move on to the next phase of this. Hopefully, we get this storm moving through tonight, we get a little bit of regular San Clemente weather. With that, we will go to the invocation with Father Benjamin Tran from Our Lady Fatima Catholic Church. If you care to, to participate, please rise.
Testing, testing. Let us put ourselves in the presence of the Lord as we pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise today for giving us this privilege of being members of this city council, this, to serve the people of San Clemente. We thank you for the gift of being citizens of this great nation, this great city of San Clemente. We pray especially for peace, peace in our hearts, peace in our minds, dispel any fears, worries, and confusion, to bring clarity to our minds and hearts. We pray for wisdom and understanding, to guide and help us to make the right, sometimes tough decisions in implementing policies, legislation that will help best maintain and improve the well-being and safety of the people of San Clemente. We pray for inspiration and compassion to be one We pray for inspiration and compassion to be one in mind, heart, and spirit, always concerned and caring for those who are hurting, suffering, deprived in our city. For all this, we pray, amen. Thank you.
Now, please remain standing, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance here. I'm gonna ask if there might be a representative from the soccer team who wants to come here to the podium and lead us in the pledge. Anybody wanna jump up and do it? Come on, one of you guys, head up here to the podium. Who's the captain over there? All right. The guy out front got pushed forward, so here we go. So, yeah, please, start to step to the podium, everybody put your hand over your heart, and then this young man will, will start us in the pledge.
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We have a volunteer for that? Who's got the best voice on council? I don't know.
Like Mark.
All right, we'll go with the roll call, I'm just gonna note everyone is, every council member is present, and then we'll move into special presentations.
First special presentation is February update on the homeless issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Adam Atamian, Deputy Community Development Director, here with the February update on the homeless outreach. All right, so in the month of February, our community outreach team made contact with 402 individuals, and these, this represented contacts with 63 unduplicated individuals. We continue to provide outreach services relating to food and hygiene, mental health assistance, referrals to outside agencies, and transportation were the, the major services that were offered and accepted. The amount of street exits that we had for the month of February was nine, with two of these individuals going to shelter, three family reunifications, and four to assisted living. As far as housing and outreach is concerned, we had contacted 63 unduplicated individuals of the month, and of those, 84 were receptive to receiving assistance into some type of shelter or housing, once that became available. Those are the main points of our outreach efforts of the month of February, and I will conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna say, I have a, a presentation I would like to give, and I was gonna do this with, with the subcommittees, but I think it may be more appropriate to do it now, talking about our homeless issue, considering some of the meetings we had last week.
Okay. Do we have that queued up?
Thank you. So, yeah, this is all about where we're at, and what we can do, moving forward. Next slide, please. Oh. So, this is based on our point in time count from last year, a new one should be coming out here soon, but based on this, in South County, we're at about 585 persons. It should be noted that point in time counts are not accurate, they are a best representation of that moment. So, there may be some more, it may be a little bit less, but at that moment from a year ago, that's where we're at. The highlighted numbers there are cities near us, you can see Dana Point, 27, Laguna Beach, 28 unsheltered, and 55 sheltered. San Clemente is at a total of 131, and San Juan Capistrano at a total of 65. So, if we look at this chart here, no, it's a little bit smaller there, you can see just a comparison between the different cities, and that yellow marking is where we're at in terms of percentage of the population multiplied by 100. So, San Clemente, it's .12% of the population, Dana Point, .08, San Juan, .18, and Laguna Beach, .12. So, Laguna Beach and San Clemente are more or less the same. Again, this is all based on data from last year, so it's not up-to-date monthly, just where we were at then. So, a week and a half ago, we had our first roundtable discussion, we'll be having, we have another one scheduled for April. We had council members there, myself, Mr. Cabral, and we had city staff, OC sheriffs, county supervisor representatives, North, a representative from North Beach County Association, nonprofit organizations, faith-based organizations, and crime and safety members there as well. One of the things we talked about in that meeting was the different types of homeless. So, we have sheltered, we have unsheltered, we have those who are forced to be homeless, we have those who choose to be homeless, we have those who are newly homeless, those who are chronically, and have been there for, over a certain amount of time. We have those who are homeless because of mental illness, those who are homeless because they are drug addicted, we have those who are willing to receive thus, and willing to receive help, and those who are service adverse. We have families, mainly those families tend to be with women and children, we also have singles, single adults who typically tend to be male, this is not exclusive, this is just in general. We also have veterans, and we have transitional youth, we have old, we have young, the purpose of this is say that there's homeless of all kinds. Because of that, there's also different causes of homelessness, mental health, cost of living. I have whack-a-mole up there, and this is the idea that as enforcement happens in different areas, homeless populations will move to areas that they are, whereas not being enforced, or enforcement isn't happening until, well, enforcement happens there, so they keep moving around different areas. We have addiction, choice, criminals, disabilities, economic, there's the lack of beds, a lack of resources, or trauma. These are brainstorming issues that we came up with in this roundtable discussion. Point of this is to say that there is no silver bullet to solve homelessness, and what needs to happen is that we need to have research of what has worked in other cities, and that is data-driven, and we also need to do research on what hasn't worked in other cities, again, data-driven. We need to know our aspirations, what can we actually, actually attain, and we also need to know our limits, what can't we do. There is one, on, on that area of limits, we have the, the Circuit Court talk, they made the presentation of Martin versus Boise, and I would like to call up our chief, our sheriff right now, to come up and say just a little bit of what Martin versus Boise is, and how does this relate to our enforcement in our city.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so in 2018, Martin, Martin v. Boise is now the case law that we here in California, and also here in Orange County abide by when it comes to enforcement, or better yet, non-enforcement of status, meaning we cannot criminalize individuals for the basic needs of sitting, sleeping, and lying down. Now, with that being said, there are no limitations on things that we can enforce, which we can enforce across, equally across all populations. So, in essence, we're not to enforce or criminalize basic functions where we're segregating out a particular sect of population, which in this case would be homeless.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Could we ask the question of him? Because I think it needs to clarify. So, we, we can, drug use, alcohol use, pets off, off leashes, drug sales, smoking, bonfires, tents covered in all sides, we can actually go after them for that. I mean, that's not their status, it's violations of our ordinances, correct?
Correct. And again, as long as we're enforcing those laws amongst all populations, right? So, we're not segregating out the homeless, per se.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. One of the things that was helpful in that roundtable discussions, that we had a, a representative from the county come in. The county, from their point of view, would love to, to create a South County Regional Center. The issue is that, at this moment, no city actually wants to host a regional center. Supervisor Katrina Foley has reached out and says that they, that she would like to host a meeting of council members from Dana Point, San Juan Capistrano, and San Clemente to discuss such an option. Hopefully, something comes from that. Again, though, the idea is that the, the county is enthusiastic to partner with individual cities to solve homelessness, but it'd be hard to do that with, they're not going to come in and just plant something without a city permission to do so. So, roundtable discussions going forward, we're going to be looking at enforcement, outreach, compliance with Martin versus Boise, wraparound services, housing, brainstorming these different ideas, what it means for our city, what can be done, what can't be done. Now, last week, I had the opportunity, Mr. James and myself got to hear from the North Beach Community Association meeting, where residents are experiencing the brunt of homelessness in our community at this moment. And the general sense was that our residents are experiencing vandalism, they're experiencing drug paraphernalia, violence, litter, they don't feel safe at night, they are having confrontations with the homeless, and that the community does not want to use the North Beach facilities because of the unsheltered being there. So, some of the recommendations from the association was that there'd be a bans, to ban the sale of liquor smaller than a fifth, to regulate services to unique zones at a different area, not North Beach, to tell the unhoused to accept services or go to jail, this is a little bit difficult with the confines of Martin versus Boise, to designate City Hall as the location to receive services for the unsheltered, change the restriction of beach access time, convert the beach to playground, creating more restrictive rules, create designated locations for unsheltered services, create a homeless hotline for the city, create educational material for the residents. This material could say what the rules are, what can be enforced, what can't be enforced, who do we call, what are the expectations from our sheriffs going on, and that we'd have regular city meetings with North Beach residents. Enforcement, OC sheriffs, explain why some codes are enforced and others aren't, direct OC sheriffs to focus on drug dealers in North Beach, high, higher frequency of code enforcement, increase pay and training for code enforcers, monitor bathrooms and playground, monitor beaches at night with regularity, collaboration with the Orange County Sheriff's Departments, add private security, add cameras, noise makers, and blinking lights during closed hours. And develop and implement a better communication plan among all city organizations. Designate an area in SC where support services will be provided, that is not North Beach. Work with neighboring cities to create a regional shelter. Press Supervisor Foley to take action, buy shelter beds from other communities, create a safe parking area, create an emergency shelter, open more permanent supportive housing, develop affordable housing. So, those are suggestions from across the field, and with this, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the city staff to develop a comprehensive plan of action to address the homeless crisis in North Beach that would incorporate both a short-term aims and goals, as well as long-term aims and goals, that we can expect, that way our residents can expect what's going to happen next.
Okay. I'm gonna ask, potentially, that we, we table the motion until the end of this item, that way we can hear from the public if there's comments on this, and also get any questions from other council members to city staff that might assist people.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a few things to say. San Clemente is the greatest city in the world to live. We're a kind city, we're a humane city. However, there are, there's a group that's landed on our, our beaches, and they're not victims, they're victims of their own doing. The city has failed, far as I'm concerned. The sheriff has failed, as it relates to homelessness, the homeless. It's time for politicians and office holders to stop hiding behind Martin versus Boise. There are a lot of things that can be taken into account. Mr. Cabral just talked about the fact that these people have to live under our standards, under our morals. We can't allow a whole group of people to defecate on our, on our sidewalks, we can't have a whole group of people defecating and urinating in the, on, on the beach trail. Women are scared to walk the beach trail. I don't wanna hear about woke-ism, progressivism, socialism, and all that. I want to deal with these vagrants that are here. We have homeless people in San Clemente, you know what? They're the poor souls that just lost their homes on Buena Vista. Those people are legitimately homeless. And we can't say they're homeless, and these people who are living on our beaches are homeless, no, the people living on our beaches are vagrants, they're criminals. When, when Fontana emptied out a, a homeless encampment, 25% of those, those that they emptied out were sexual predators. So, we can assume 25% of the people living on our beaches are sexual predators of some sort. Mr. Mayor, may I continue?
You may, I, I'd just like to say, we, we are in the, we're in the section of this item where we have had a staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, you just gave Mr. Inmire 10 minutes.
No, it's because it was part of the presentation, he was presenting it as part of this item, as part of the, so, I'm saying there's gonna be plenty of time to talk about what, I, I guess here's what I'm getting at.
You're shutting me down, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not shutting you down, we, we do need to hear from the public, we also, we may have a lot of comments, and I'm wondering if we do some of these presentations for our groups.
We didn't know about this presentation, this presentation was just sprung on us by Mr. Inmire, and probably you as well.
Well, no, I didn't have anything to do with the presentation, but I guess what I'm getting at is, this is, this, I think this deserves a longer discussion, but I'm mindful to our folks who have come for the presentation here, and I wanna make sure.
So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion for a special meeting on Tuesday, March the 28th, at 6:00 PM, to discuss solutions to the vagrant homeless problem we have on North Beach and throughout this community, and one of the things I wanna do is bring with us a potential contract from a security company that specializes in dealing with vagrant populations, and how to deal with them in the community, and how to disperse them. And so, my motion is for a special meeting on March the 28th at 6:00 PM.
And, okay. Just as with Mr. Inmire's motion, I think let's wait till we get to the end of this item before we do motions, because that way we will have heard from the public, and we'll have the, we'll have all of the information before, so I'm not, I'm not shutting anything down, I'm saying that certainly, let's entertain that motion, but let's get through the item first. Now, here's my question.
Could I read, could we?
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, motion in a second, and we have another motion on the table, and I'm, I'm as the parliamentarian saying, let's table those motions till the end, we'll get to them, but...
But I, I just wanna make, make sure, can we move this issue to the front of the meeting after the two, the, the high school and the other presentations that we have?
Exactly, yes. I would like to get the high school students, though, through.
Thank you.
So, let's do that, does that work for everyone?
That works for me.
Okay. I think this is, deserves a longer conversation, and I wanna make sure we got kids here, they, I gotta get home and do their homework, before it gets too late. So, I know we, I know we, does, does anyone have questions for Mr. Atamian still, potentially? Because we can keep him here for that, or, okay, so we're done with staff, so we'll move on to the public comments, but we'll do that after we do the presentation.
I do have a question, Staff.
Okay, sorry.
Is this proper time?
Yes.
My question to Staff is, I understand that currently FAM is delivering food to people that, that, that are homeless, or have a need, financial need, and for those people living in cars that don't have refrigeration available, they have weekly, what they call, their weekly packs. packs of food. And I understand that those weekly packs of food are being delivered to our two homeless advocates, who are then transferring that food to the homeless folks all over town. Do you... Can you comment on that?
Our outreach team does provide certain supplies to the homeless as a way to engage with them. However, we're not delivering food on behalf of FAM.
Okay, I understand that... Not on behalf of FAM, they're picking it up from FAM and delivering it. I understand as many as 75 in the last several months, as many as 75 weekly packets of food have been delivered by our city employees to the homeless around town. And I guess my question would be, as we look at this issue as a city, the appropriateness of our city employees being food delivery services for FAM. And I'm not criticizing FAM for the work that they do, but that particular part of it is an issue that we probably need to look at.
Yeah, so, I've addressed this with staff, because there have been some questions that came up about this, and as far as... We're talking like the boxes of food.
No, they're smaller than the boxes. They're clear bags, they're much smaller than the boxes of food that they deliver to the cars. It's a... They call them the...
The daily.
The daily packs that are good for... They give them out once a week to people that ask. And my understanding is we've had as many as 75 packets by our city employees that have been picked up in the last few months and delivered. That's my understanding. And I guess I want to talk about what the protocol is for our city employees and that function.
Mr. Mayor, there are witnesses who have observed city employees delivering food to North Beach. So, that is happening. Thank you, Mr. No Block.
Well, I just think if you don't have the information now, that we look at that and address that issue somehow internally. So, that needs to be as part of what we think about as we go forward.
Okay, let's... Now that we... But your understanding, Mr. Etamian, is that that is not happening, or that that's not part of the directive that these outreach services is given?
I believe there's a couple identifications of food being delivered. Our staff does get some supplies from FAM to provide as outreach tools in order to engage with people who are maybe a little bit more service-resistant. So, that... I know that has happened, but that's not a major aspect of our outreach efforts.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, at this point, I think we have finished with our questions for staff, and so, we're going to take a break on this item and go to... Let's go to the soccer first, and then we'll do the Red Cross. Does that work?
Yes.
Is everyone fine with that? Yeah, okay.
So, this is a presentation of commendation to the San Clemente High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team in honor of winning the CIF title.
All right.
Come on to the front.
Let's have you guys come up, and then you guys want to go down there, too?
Yeah.
Take a picture with me. And I'll let... I'll say a good... A couple of words about Chris Murray, the coach, and these fine young lads here that I've gotten to hang out with a little bit. We see a picture here, it's kind of small, but that's us after one of the victories in regionals there, when I came down to celebrate with them. You know, and I've said this before with some of our soccer teams, I mean, it holds a special place for me, because I did play soccer. I played varsity soccer in high school. I wasn't as good as any of you guys. You have really made San Clemente look good, not just because of how successful you were this season, but the way you did it. You know, the workman-like way, the teamwork, the way you came together, the way you met adversity and overcame it, and, you know, got right to the precipice of... Got the CIF championship and right to the precipice of the state championship. And I just couldn't be prouder of all you guys, and I'm so glad that I got to celebrate with you after that one victory. It's kind of funny. So, I went to the one game, and then I had to work, so I couldn't make the next game, and I heard these guys... I heard from the principal, they're like, "Where's the mayor? We thought the mayor was going to be here." So, we'll continue to support you all, but one of the things that I said after the last game was, and it's some of the things that I'm most proud of you guys, is right, it's what you do when you have a setback, when everything doesn't go as you wish it would, because that's going to happen in life. So, this is a good learning lesson for all of you guys, right? And I know you were upset, and you guys played hard, and you were the better team, right? But that's not how it always works in the games, right? And that's not how it always works in life. And so, I was just proud of you guys. You kept your head up, you kept playing hard throughout the whole game, nobody turned on each other, and you guys made us all proud right through the end of that... Right through the end of the season. And I know you're going to have a great season again next year for those of you returning. So, Coach Murray, thank you for having a great group here and getting this program going so strongly. And to all of you guys, congratulations on just an exceptional season that, again, made San Clemente so proud. And by the way, this is your first lesson of municipal government here, right? So, take this back to your high school teachers and let them know, it's not always clean in government, right? You know, you got to figure out how to work things out with people you disagree with, and we're going to do that. But so glad we could have you all here, and hopefully, we get some parents here, too, that can see you all up here. We'll take a picture, but I just want to say, if Coach or anybody, if the captain or anybody wants to say a few words about how the season went, be happy to have you there, too.
Coming on supporting us through the whole season, so...
Thank you, man. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate it. I'll give you this. This is our certificate of recognition, then, for the team, and we got all the names on here, so you guys will have to share this thing. But we got Beckham, Bozeman, all right? We got Griffin Blair, Kai Kasano, Michael Sisneros, Andrew Drabkin, Luis Egui, Max Gonzalez, Ryan Goodwin, Rolando Hernandez, Keon Jadabai. You guys aren't making it easy here. Jonah Levandowski, Finn Linus... Where's Finn? I got Max Paloso, Will Pico... There's a good San Clemente name. Jacob Poole, Zach Raylich, David Ridnick... Ridicki? We got Matthew Ridnicki. Give Matthew a hand, too. Ryan Savoy, Mason Schofield, Logan Seymour, Gilberto Tapia, and Kai Trager. We also got to recognize our team assistants here. Enzo Candolo, Brady Lloyd, we got JV players, Kiran Ota, and Thomas Powers, and, of course, the coaching staff and Chris. Well, well done again. I appreciate it. Nice work on the pitch, and on to next year. Let's get a picture with the plaque.
All right, Tritons on three. One, two, three. Tritons!
Can you all just get, like, your students?
Some of them may stay. But, yeah, we'll wait a couple minutes.
Mayor, there's point-of-order cards that... There's point-of-order cards that member of the public can fill out, so they don't have to disrupt.
Yeah, let's do the Red Cross commendation.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is presentation of proclamation for American Red Cross Month, and this is a proclamation presented to David Ingwall of the American Red Cross. Come on up.
All right. Thank you for coming, sir. Appreciate it. So, you know, because of what we saw this week with our unfortunate residents who are displaced, I think we got a, you know, a firsthand look, unfortunately, at all the good work that the Red Cross does, because the Red Cross was there right away with our city staff and reaching out to the residents, reaching out to the property owners who were displaced because of this landslide and providing any services that they may need. And it was great to see the Red Cross, you know, appear kind of out of nowhere and be there as a resource for the residents and working with cert, working with our law enforcement and our firefighters to, you know, to do what they could to make this difficult situation a little bit easier. And I know that that's what the Red Cross does, not just in San Clemente, not just in California or the United States, but around the world. So, thank you, sir, for all your good work. So, on behalf of the City of San Clemente, I'd like to present you with this commendation. It's a little bit long, so bear with me here. Whereas in times of crisis, people in San Clemente come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in San Clemente who continue to carry out Clara's lifesaving legacy. They join millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. Whereas in San Clemente, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans, which is really important in San Clemente, along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community. Now, therefore, I, Chris Duncan, Mayor of San Clemente, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of San Clemente, California, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of San Clemente to reach out and support its humanitarian mission, especially right now. So, thank you, sir, for coming, and I want to give you this commendation.
So, Andy, welcome to your new job, and we had a chance to see you on Sunday. I think we had a chance to meet on Sunday as well, and Mayor Proton as well. Listen, the San Clemente group that you have here is a really caring organization. The elected officials, I'm really impressed with everybody. I happened to be here on Sunday for the landslide. I can tell these people really want to help people that are really in need. Your community here, last year, donated over 1,300 pints of blood, which basically helps 3,900 people in saving their lives. So, you've got a great community here, and we are really looking forward to working with you even more to continue to help save lives. We have between 12 and 18 fires every single month in Orange County. They do happen in your community. We just had one in San Juan this morning, at 4:32 this morning. I'm a volunteer, and we're always looking for more volunteers. So, redcross.org would be a great place to do that. We can always use your blood, and we can always use your help. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the 2023 Wylond National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Nikki Beach, the city's water conservation analyst, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the city's recommended participation in the 2023 Wylond National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. This is a friendly competition between cities nationwide in April in which residents take a quick one-minute online pledge to make or continue behavior changes that provide water savings, protect water... Ocean water quality, excuse me, and reduce solid waste generation. The residents from winning cities in the challenge in each size group are entered to win many fun prizes from the program sponsors, including Toro irrigation equipment and up to $3,000 towards their utility bills. Schools in winning cities can also win recycled blue light glasses for their students. And this would be the city's fourth year participating in the challenge and would build on previous year's success through social media and website posts, press releases and newspaper ads, water bill inserts, and local schools and classrooms. Participation would help the city's outreach on water conservation, stormwater quality issues, and solid waste programs, and also prepare our residents for the next drought, which is always right ahead of us. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Nikki? I think, hopefully, we don't have a drought for a couple of years now, but it's always important to conserve water and especially keep our ocean clean, and I know this is a program that we've done, well, it looks like, for four years now. So, do we have a motion?
Just... I do have a question. Is the city following... I know we get our water from the Colorado River, but, you know, water's fungible, just like money. Is the city following where the reservoir levels are at this point? The last I checked, most of the reservoirs were at historical averages. Is that true? Are you following it?
Yeah, we follow them through the Municipal Water District of Orange County and Metropolitan Water District of Southern California's data. That's generally probably a true statement. I can't tell you off the top of my head what each of the reservoirs are at, especially after this last storm. But if you have any further questions, I think David Rebenstorf is in the audience available.
And, you know, so, as it relates to the Colorado River, how is that measured? And, you know, is... I know it's drying up as is Lake Mead, and that's where we get our water, is it not, from the Colorado River?
Yeah, David Rebenstorf, Fertility's Director. We do receive our water from Northern California and from the Colorado River Basin. With all the rain and snowpack this current year, Metropolitan will be pooling more water from Northern California and less from the Colorado... Metropolitan will be pooling more water from Northern California and less from the Colorado River Basin, just trying to allow Lake Mead and some of those other reservoirs to improve. And I know part of the challenge, too, with reservoirs is in Northern California, you don't want to have them too full before that snowpack melts, because then you'll overtopple the dams. So, it's a, it's a true management of that water. And the state has also made recommendations to put some of that water back into groundwater as well. And so, some of our, Orange County Water District and other agencies in Southern California, they'll be taking water from Northern California and then pumping that into the groundwater basin to improve groundwater basin quality.
Am I correct that all is not well? You know, the, the age of these dams, they've reached their life expectancy, and there's no plan or money to, to replace these dams. Is that correct?
I, I don't want to state something that, you know, I don't have a lot of information about, but I'm sure some are old and aging and need replacement.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
So, moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion is James. Second is Nobok. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. And thank you, Nikki.
I'll move, we wave, reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Wait, wait.
That next item?
Well, we were going to go back to the homelessness after we got through the special presentation.
So, I would make a motion that we do oral communications, Part One, first, and then we go back to the February update on homeless issues, because I think most of the people are here to talk about that situation.
Okay. And I certainly am not opposed to that. So, then there's the, the question as, as far as it goes for the rules of order. Because we have the update, it is under special presentations, are people supposed to talk about homelessness in that update, or in that section only, that item, or, or, or not, and, and then oral communications instead? Or could they, could they choose whichever one they'd like to speak to?
They can and should choose. They, they get three minutes to speak under either milestone.
I see. Okay. Well, we have a, we have a procedural motion to move oral communications up before we get back to the homelessness. Does that sound like something everybody would be, okay. Then we have support for that, so let's go right to oral communications, and then we'll get back to Item 1A after oral communications. How many, how many speakers do we have? For oral communications.
For oral communications, we have five speakers.
Okay. And then do we also get comments for item, for the homeless item?
Yes, we have quite a few.
How many on that one?
Nine for 1A. Nine, nine cards for Item 1A.
Would, would you still like regular oral communications first, and then?
You already voted in favor of it.
Yeah, I think we do oral communications for, I, I'm in favor of doing oral communication.
That doesn't change anybody's opinion? Okay. Then we'll go right with oral communications. Yeah.
First speaker is Brad Malamud.
Hello. Now that we're losing BB and K, some miracles occur. You're still involved in this toll road appeal, which has no merit whatsoever. It only benefits BB and K if they happen to win a mitigation fee. Every original claim in the lawsuit was dropped. It wasn't appealed. This was just a blood-sucking, trying to get money out of the toll road. But what you weren't told is that there's already been an award against the city during the trial for attorney's fees, and there's another pending million, I think it's a million and a half dollars. And if the city loses, and they're going to lose, it's 100% certainty in my mind that the city will lose the appeal, then there will be an award, and Scott said their firm's not paying for it. It'll be coming out of the, out of all these residents' pockets. I advise you to get your new city attorney involved and settle this lawsuit, settle the appeal, walk away by both the parties, because if you win the appeal, the only issue appealed is mitigation fees, which the city doesn't pay. The city doesn't pay mitigation fees. They have no standing. They've already lost the standing issue in, in, this was Ratan and Tucker, in the beach parking lawsuit, and they're going to lose this one at the Court of Appeals for the same reason. Moving on, the, I hope you don't do a retainer agreement in the new law, new law firm, because this retainer agreement that Scott negotiated got him $500 an hour during one month. So, he doubled, basically doubled the regular rates by telling you, is giving you a fixed fee to benefit the city. Not true. But there is something in that contract for $450 an hour for some type of legal fees. That's got to be stricken. Doesn't define what it is. You don't pay your lawyers $450 an hour. Find somebody else. That, that has to be stricken. And a most favored nation clause has to be put in every contract with every law firm, with every consultant. By the way, tonight you're going to approve another contract, the one in September, for $48,000. Five months later, they're asking for another $50,000 stop, hiring consultants, and doubling their contracts the minute you sign it. I think the other issue is Mr. Duncan's approval of fees and costs to go back to Washington, D.C. to promote his political career. I think a week later, I could be wrong about that, he's going for another office. Fine, he can run for all offices want, but don't charge the city of San Clemente to go back to a conference that is not needed. He's a ceremonial mayor. He's not, the city manager runs the city. That's who goes to, this was a policy forum. And I looked at the agenda, it's talking about how to get money out of the Biden administration and meet and greet with famous Democrats. Give me a break. And I understand he upgraded his seat in economy to economy plus at city expense because he didn't want to sit in the seat he was assigned. Okay, upgrade, but pay for it yourself. Don't sign that pol, don't agree to that policy tonight to allow the mayor only to ask questions. I don't care who the mayor is. If the council has a question, you need to ask them. How could the mayor possibly know what questions you're going to ask? The answer is they don't. Ask questions when necessary.
Nicely timed. Okay, who's next?
Rick Lefler, followed by Ken Postajak.
Come on, bring it on, Rick. Bring it on.
It's going to be a lot easier. Rick Lefler, and I'm speaking tonight as President, CEO of the Beaches and Parks Foundation. And again, nobody knows who we are, but I'm, I'm hoping you guys can change that a little bit. We're, we just wrote a big check, and I mean, it was a big in amount, and it's a big check, too. But, well, we'd like the opportunity to come and maybe update you a little bit on what the foundation does, how we bring in money and how we disperse it. Haven't done it for years. And so, I'm asking somebody to maybe put it on the agenda from two weeks from, from now. Won't be a long presentation, but I think it'll be really, really informative to you. So, that's the first thing. Now, the second thing, this is going to, this is kind of interesting, and you guys really all deserve this. I, I'd like you to bring up, so we did talk about this before COVID. In fact, is our, the stipend that we pay our city council is one of the lowest in all of Orange County. And yet, if you go to a lot of the other council meetings around the county, there are nothing like this. I mean, there's a lot of interaction, there's a lot of work that's done. I, I know the amount of time that, that you put into this, and the fact that this, that one of the lowest stipends in the county is ridiculous. There's a formula for bringing it up, you know, they go back to the last time you got a raise, which was like 20 years ago, and then I think they let you go up 5% per year, not, not compounded, which basically means it doubles, you know, from 400 to 800. Still, you're, you're all working for free or actually paying to be council people. That's not fair. It's not right. Frankly, I'm, I'm embarrassed by it, because I, I know how much work you do, and I look at other cities and know how little work they do. And I, I'd just like to see you come, come up. It still won't make you anywhere near the highest bait in the county, but at least it's the start to, to show that we do appreciate what you do. All of you, I appreciate all of you. Yes, all of you, every single one of you, I appreciate. Don't always agree with you, but I appreciate it. I think the citizens do, too. I think it's timely now. I know in the past it's been, oh, everybody's going to hate us, nobody's going to hate you. Trust me. Hey, only about eight people even watch these council meetings. They won't even know. So, it's time. I hope you have the courage to go ahead and do what's right now. Bring yourself up a little bit, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Yes. Before the next speaker, you would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to bring the Beaches and Parks at, presentation at the meeting in two weeks.
Second.
Okay. Motion is Cabral. Second is James to have the beat, it's the Friends of the, Friends of San Clemente, come and present a check. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And I thought he was going to make a motion to raise our pay.
Anybody want to make that motion? Okay, no.
Not me tonight.
Seeing none. Moving on.
Next speaker is Ken, followed by Ray Harju.
Hello, Ken Pochek. I thank you, Council, for listening to us tonight. I'm part of the North, North Beach Community Association. We had a great meeting the other day. Thank you, Mark, thank you, Gene, Adam, Andy. It was, it was really nice, and, and we realized Jake couldn't make it based on the landslide, and I appreciate what you're doing for those people, too. So, thank you. Just a little backup for Ray, he's going to follow me, but, you know, the North Beach area, we brought this so you could hold it and look at it and see it. We have property damage going on, we have break-ins. This is a beach hut break-in of our newest restaurant in the community. It's a great restaurant. I hope you all give it a try. We, the next chart shows the camping on North Beach. That's been going on, I mean, I've lived here six years, I've watched it six years. So, it's kind of getting old. I blanked out the one sign there that was their message to us that you could see on there, but I, I guess you could imagine what that said. We have drug and alcohol use, you know, every day, literally. If they're there, it's happening. I can smell it, I can see it. I've put a picture in here. It's just not acceptable for our beaches to have to go through that. We have what seems like mental illness going on, people wandering down the street screaming sometimes, and actually just falling down where they stand and going to sleep. This case, we got them sleeping at the Handsome Beach Club just before a wedding ceremony. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that's acceptable at all. We had, we had eight OCSD officers, two fire trucks, two police cars, two ambulances. I mean, I'm laughing because I'm like, what the heck's going on here? These people are dangerous. You're sending in the full force to help us, and this was the, to pick up somebody out of the street in North Beach by the beach club. We had an older gentleman stabbed the other day. I guess he's not pressing charges, but we don't think that's acceptable at all. And if this continues, we're going to have worse. We're providing medical services in the North Beach parking lot, and we're providing food. You can see the picture there. They come on Saturday and they just dump it on the table, and then people just show up to pick it up. And the birds get it, and whatever. Some of it goes away, some of it gets eaten by birds, some of it just gets tossed on the ground, and then eventually someone picks it up. So, that's just not acceptable. I'm hoping the council can choose where we do things for our city. I think it's very important, that's your job, and I'm hoping that you don't choose North Beach as a, as a place to, to do the kind of things that help the people that need the help. I'll finish with the mission statement, maintaining a safe, healthy atmosphere in which to live, work, and play. That's exactly what we want on North Beach, and I'm hoping that you'll help us to get that. Thank you very much.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Oh.
Can I ask a question?
We, we're trying to keep the questions down to the commenters. Is this, okay.
Next speaker is Ray Harju.
Hi, I'm Ray Harju. I live in the North Beach area. North Beach Community Association was formed to give voice to the residents and businesses in North Beach, because North Beach is unique. Can I have the next slide? North Beach, North Beach has unique problems. Now, one of the big, significant ones we have is the behavior, the bad behavior of, of the unhoused. Most of us didn't move to North Beach for the peace and quiet, but also didn't move there to have to deal with the bad behavior of, of the homeless. Next slide. A few weeks ago, we had a meeting at the Mulan. There were six of us, there were two local residents, two businesses, and two city people. And the locals agreed, strongly agreed on two things. One, the bad behavior of the homeless jeopardizes the safety and quality of life of North Beach residents, businesses, and visitors. And the second thing we firmly agreed on was not enough was, was being done to protect the residents, businesses, and visitors in North Beach from the behavior of the homeless. So, so what do we do? Next slide. We decided to have a town hall. The objective of the town hall was nothing more than to solicit, record, and eventually present the ideas to the city to improve the safety and quality of life of the residents, businesses, and visitors in North Beach that's being damaged by the bad behavior of the homeless. The results, we had 100 people show up. Thank you, guys, for, for showing up at our meeting. Mark gave us, gave a huge portion of the results of the thing. So, thank you. What I just handed out was, was a hard copy of, of all that. So, we had everybody that spoke, we took their, their comments, we put them on the list, that's the long list, and then we summarize it, that's the cover list there. The top item on that cover list was law enforcement. Okay. Our ask, our only ask is that the, the city respond to our suggestions or our ideas. That, that's all we want. Next slide. You have a lot of organizations that can bring to bear on the problem. Every one of these organizations could play in some small way to, to address the problem. It's, it's a matter of will and leadership. Next slide. North Beach Community Association just wants to help. We have the will, we hope that the city has the leadership. Thank you.
The final speaker is AQ.
I have a presentation. I'm very concerned why we didn't have an emergency council, city council meeting before the press conference. During COVID, we sure had them, and so I'm surprised we, we didn't have one. I had an opportunity in speaking with the city manager regarding who's in charge of disaster services, and it concerns me that, well, it turns out that we, we, the city is contracted with someone. It's an outside vendor, and so I want to know who, where were they? And so, I really, speaking with the city manager, he mentioned that we should, should have an incident command system. And it's a big concern when Mayor Duncan tonight stated that the American Red Cross appeared out of nowhere, and we should have known. So, next slide, please. My concern was that this press conference was a partisan press conference, and because there was no mention of Senator Janet, no mention, sorry, no introduction of Senator Janet Winn, Assemblymember Lori Davies, or, or Mayor Protem Nobok, Steve Nobok, and of course, Mark Gennmeyer. But if it wasn't for Senator Janet Winn, she's the one that graciously introduced Mayor Protem Nobok. And there was no mention of Senator Janet Winn, Assemblymember Lori Davies, or mention of Assemblywoman Diane Dixon, who worked together to send a letter on Monday to the governor, to Governor Newsom to declare Orange County a state of emergency. No Mayor Protem tile is on that post of Mayor Duncan on his official city council page. Next slide, please. This was a, people lost their homes, and here they are, just smiling, and thank you, there's some solemn faces out there. But I grew up North Beach, I am now 204, but it, it's a concern. You know, there was a, there was a line drawn there. Democrats on one side, Republicans on the other side, and I really don't think that that's, that's appropriate during this timeframe. Next slide, please. And of course, there's, again, another, another political aim. Next slide, please. This isn't the first time where Mayor Duncan took actions on himself, I mean, taking actions on behalf of the city without authority or approval of the city council in this press release. Next slide, please. Mayor Duncan also took, was taking action without authority or approval for unilateral action, again, with another press release regarding against mayors against illegal guns. And Mayor Duncan at the time used a city letterhead without, with all the members of the dais on that city letterhead without unilateral support, without support of the city council. Next slide, please. And, thank you.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Could I, could I ask a question? I've never seen that letter.
Which, what letter?
The letter that, that apparently I'm on.
No, you weren't on it. Prior council is on it.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, Mayor Duncan, I do have something to respond to on, on my favorite commenter, Q. I don't have a question for you. I have a question for,
Oh, sorry.
For Mr. Hall. No, you're good. Mr. Hall, I was under the impression that the Mr. Hall, I was under the impression that the director of emergency services in time of emergency was the director of public works. I'd been told that for the past three years. Now, I learn that there is an outside agency, a third party, a contractor, if you will, who acts as our director of emergency services. I would have to say we actually don't have a director of emergency services. Am I correct in that?
I think you mean functionally, we don't have.
Functionally, that is correct. We are going to bring forward to the city council not only a structure for our emergency services, but also the training that's going to be necessary to make sure that we are prepared for any event that happens.
You just led in my next question. Have we ever opened the EOC?
Not in the three weeks I've been here.
I know the question, I know the answers to these questions. They're rhetorical in nature, but I think the public needs to know. We don't have an instant command system, do we not?
That's correct.
We've never had a tabletop exercise, particularly with songs, or with Kent Pendleton, or with our neighboring communities. Is that correct?
Again.
Not in recent history.
Probably rhetorical, not in the last three weeks.
Yeah, not in recent. So, I'm very concerned. I think, I feel like I've been misled for a few years on this. What I'm going to ask is, we need to have an action, after-action report on this. And we need to identify our vulnerabilities. We need to identify what went wrong, what went right. Probably, there was nothing we could do to save lives there. We didn't lose any lives. Probably, nothing we could have done to save homes there. However, it could have been another situation in which we needed to have a professional emergency services director responding to events as they occurred. And not only that, a communication system and a chain of command system, a chain of command in place. That's all I have. Everything I said was rhetorical. I have to apologize, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. And I would only add to that, as a couple of weeks, maybe before you got here, we had an accident, an incident where Pico was shut down. We had a car hit a light pole, closed Pico down. We didn't have a way for traffic to get in or out of our city. And we should have had some kind of plan to execute. So, I would just add to that another concern.
Okay, so, yeah, you have council direction to which, to what you were already doing, which is analyze our emergency operation system. And let's get ourselves back on track there. So, we're ready for the next one. I do want to say our staff did an incredible job stepping up. Given that we don't have the infrastructure in place, especially in the engineering department, they really, really all did great work kind of stepping in and getting it done. I see in the back that. Thank you.
I think Mr. Koger might.
Mr. Koger is here, yes. And you have something to add, or you?
Only if you have questions.
Oh, only if. Any questions for Mr. Koger?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. So, we are back on item 1A. And as a reminder, we do have, we have a motion without a second. We have a motion with a second. We will get to, but I think we should hear the public first. Okay. We have nine comments.
First speaker is Rick Lefler, followed by Lois McNeil.
Okay, just a couple of things. Just wanted to say, start with that Chief Christian's description of the Martin versus Boise restrictions is quite, quite accurate. Want to extend a little bit on Martin versus Boise as long as we're, he was talking about it. And that's the fact that early on in Martin versus Boise, some other Superior Court Justice, Superior Court judges asked for clarification and actually petitioned the Ninth District to hear it for clarification. A three-judge panel refused to hear it. And one of the dissenters, one of the five dissenters on that ruling, said basically that this was misguided, that by putting in Martin versus Boise under the wording that it is, is going to restrain cities from enforcing laws, from ensuring public safety and public health. And we were going to suffer the consequences, and we would see that down the road. That was in 2018, 19, 2019. Well, here it is 2023. We've seen it's come to fruition. It's exactly correct. Some recent things in Martin versus Boise is kind of interesting is that Grant Pass, Oregon was sued because they actually arrested somebody for camping, not sleeping. And they arrested her. And the suit was filed against Grant Pass because she was sleeping on the sidewalk. And she, all she had was shoes, and that was it. And, or shoes, she had shoes and a blanket. She was arrested because Grant Pass thought that that was too many amenities. That was camping. That was not sleeping. Rightfully so, they won their suit because the court, Ninth District Court, said that you need amenities when you're sleeping. Having a jacket and a blanket is not, is not an anomaly. They should be allowed that. They didn't extend it and say that they should have a tent, a cot, all of your belongings. They just said a blanket and a jacket was acceptable. That's good. Going on further now, recently, Sacramento has put in, implemented a program or in ordinance that homeless or unsheltered people may sleep on capital grounds there at night. But in the day, they have to go. And they can't bring tents. They can't bring. So, we can see that there is some enforcement that can be done. And the Ninth District has agreed that there is some enforcement. You're going to hear, I think, about a private security company coming, or possibility. I want to say this is not to augment the police department. It really isn't. They're not coming here as police officers. It's more augmenting our code and our park rangers. Because they can, they're, all they do is homeless, really, is homeless interaction. They've done it for over a year now in Oceanside, had great success. And I think with the people talking about North Beach, if that was the first thing they did when they come in here is just do some activity in North Beach, I think we would see a huge improvement. So, I'd like you to think about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lois McNeil, followed by Donna Vedreen, followed by Shelley Moore.
Oh, is it, I'm, is, who's next? Is it me?
Lois McNeil.
You, Lois.
Okay. Hi. I've been resident of this beautiful city for the last four years. And when I first moved here, my introduction to the homeless was a homeless woman who shoved her shopping cart into me. And I was trying to avoid her while I was crossing the street. That was my introduction to the homeless. So, I am very aware of the homeless issue that's been taking place. And I live in North Beach, so I know what's going on down there, too. But we shouldn't just say it's North Beach. I talked to somebody who told me that in South Beach, a woman was raped walking the beach trail with two large dogs at 8:30 at night. So, nobody, when you talk about women being afraid to walk the beach trail, yep, they are. And I won't walk the beach trail at night anymore. I used to when I first lived here. When I first moved here, I didn't see any issues until I started having vagrants. They are not unhoused. By the way, unhoused is not a word. And we should stop using words that do not belong in the English language. It only confuses the issue. Unhoused does not mean anything. You cannot give me a definition of it. The other thing about the quote vagrants is that, yes, I've had one of them try to climb inside my window of my house. So, please. And your city staff? No. They are not the ones to come up with the issues. And they are not the ones to come up with the solutions. They don't know. They don't live there. And by the way, there's no magic bullet? Yes, there is. There is a magic bullet for homelessness. And that has already taken place in several cities. We don't need to keep having committees and subcommittees and paying more people to do more things when we already know what the issues are and we already know what the solutions can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Vedreen, followed by Shelley Moore, followed by Michelle Brooks.
My name is Donna Vedreen, and I'm a resident of San Clemente for 22 years. There is an urgent need for emergency sheltering of homeless persons in San Clemente during this very cold, windy, and rainy weather. It is your responsibility as our elected officials to direct, authorize, and provide resources such as hotel vouchers and shelter beds during extreme weather for those living in our city's public spaces without adequate shelter or housing. Calls have been made to deputies for welfare checks, with unsheltered going to hospitals, being admitted for hypothermia and injuries directly related to being exposed to the weather and elements. Being unsheltered during these winter storms puts lives at risk, gives our deputies, our outreach service workers, and city staff insufficient resources to do their job properly, and results in significant increased cost of deputies' time, ambulance expense, emergency room fees, inpatient hospital care, and intensive unit care costs instead of providing hotel vouchers or accessible shelter beds. You are aware of the problems, have been asked to authorize and provide weather-activated cold-weather shelter or hotel vouchers, but continue to vote against providing emergency assistance and shelter for our unsheltered and unhoused. This puts our city at risk for increased litigation with additional significant costs. You are three lawyers on the dais. Does this make sense to you? As an RN and a healthcare professional, my training says provide shelter, substance, and protection from the elements. Prevention of hypothermia, injuries, and infection is best practice in the proper humanitarian response. Have you asked for a report from OCSD and our paramedics, ambulance services on the number of calls and outcomes for welfare checks and disposition of our homeless population in San Clemente? I have personal knowledge of two individuals that required hospitalization following exposure to cold and injuries sustained while unsheltered due to cold and rains during our ongoing winter storms. My ask tonight is for emergency shelter in San Clemente during rainy and cold weather. Those who would like shelter should have vouchers for hotels in San Clemente for a temporary stay. Working on a city and nonprofit faith-based community partnership for cold-weather shelter is doable, but it would need to be voted on by city council. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Shelley Moore, followed by Michelle Brooks, followed by Daryl McFann.
About the nifty PowerPoint presentation, we've seen it. We've heard it. None of those ideas are new. Where are you going to move these people into my backyard now? Their backyard? You cannot move these people around the city and expect that it's all going to work out. Right now, we have laws, no smoking, no littering, no unlicensed pets, no unlicensed cars, no RV camping, no camping at the beach, no camping in the hills, and no propane tanks. Any one of these things would get me ticketed or arrested. Why would I be ticketed or arrested when nobody else in the city is, is doing the exact same things? Another problem is the feedings going out the beach. Great, I love that they want to do that. But they don't stick around and pick up the trash they leave. They should be ticketed. The group that brings that food down, since they are the ones who will pay the fee, or the fine, or whatever, should have to pay for the pickup of trash and littering and all that. It's just, it's out of control. I mean, how is Coronado doing it? We don't, we can't say no camping, but we can say no camping in the open areas, in the hills, on the beach, on the sidewalks. Move them around. Stop making it easy to be homeless here. I have a cousin who is homeless. He has told me over and over again, he gets all the food he can want. He gets hotels when he wants. He gets jackets, tents. He gets everything he wants. And he gets money for drugs. He sees no need to leave the streets. That's exactly what we're doing here by letting them get away with whatever they want. I mean, who wouldn't want to lie around and do drugs and drink all day long? I mean, come on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. First, I just want to add in, I completely agree with what Rick said. I think you guys should absolutely go ahead and push forward with giving yourselves a raise and stipend. I think it would make it look like more of a job than just a volunteer role because a lot of you take it as a full-time job, and that's a lot of work. So, appreciate it all. I just want to start by quoting Ben Franklin. Well done is better than well said. And personally, I, you know, I sat through all the meetings with Lisa Bartlett, Supervisor Bartlett. It was all a bunch of talking heads. And all we did was PowerPoints and discussions. And if I never see another PowerPoint again, it'll be too soon. Personally, I'm sick of it. I felt that the last meeting was the first time we finally made some headway and some progress into trying to figure out a solution. And I remember at the last meeting challenging those of you up here with ties to our current supervisor fully to put this back on her, to not have her come to another town hall, take a photo and smile, and say what she's working on. I sat through a meeting with the district office, and all she did was tout all these things she's worked on. And when I called her, too, doing the same thing here for our dilapidated schools in San Clemente, she blew me off. So, I want to see what she actually is going to do about the homeless. The county caused this problem. Put it back on the county. I don't believe the city should, like Mark, or like Councilman Enmeyer said, no city wants it in their backyard. Don't put it in the city. It needs to go on county land. County caused this problem. County needs to put it on their county-owned land. They have the money. They can pay for it. Make them do it. We have to put that pressure on the county. You guys are all elected city officials. Put the pressure on the county to make them solve this problem. It's not something our small town can fix. I don't want them dispersed around the city to where they can just further go somewhere else. And you heard the North Beach residents complaining about them being fed at the beach. Those feedings are done by advocates. They're done by churches. Stop those feedings. They're not picking up after themselves. They're creating problems for the residents at North Beach. It's time we enforce, like you've heard from the other speakers, what we can enforce. And if we aren't able to have the resources to do it via code, park rangers, and our sheriffs, I'm all for hiring a private security company, but don't just disperse them throughout the city where they just live within the shadows of more bushes. We need to start enforcing the ordinances, the codes, the laws that we can. And please, tell me what you've done tonight to show action since the last meeting two weeks ago to put pressure on the county to solve this. This is on them. It needs to be on them. Use your connections. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daryl McFann, followed by AQ, followed by Kathy Esfahani.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I, too, attended the North Beach Roundtable. It's really the first time, I've been here since '78, that I heard a group of people who's been very silent and just absorbing this, speak up and say, enough is enough. You've turned North Beach into just an outhouse. It is, filled with violence and drugs. Three years ago, I saved a man's life there when we were trying to move him over to the Pico place. He was unconscious, and he was having his head stomped on. Nothing's changed. Nothing has changed. We can't just up and move them somewhere. Otherwise, let's pick in front of Cypress Cove. How about we pick up at Toledo and dedicate a spot for them? But they have completely dominated North Beach to the point where residents don't walk the trail. They don't go to that beach. I have four daughters and 10 grandkids. All four daughters grew up at North Beach. That's where they learned to surf. That's where they played. I have 10 grandkids. Eight of them has never even seen North Beach, and they won't. It's that bad. I don't understand how we've allowed this to fester year after year after year. We've got the main guy there who actually was put into permanent housing and kicked out again for growing marijuana. We had another guy who was put in permanent housing and kicked out because he was sub-renting it so he could hang at North Beach. So, permanent housing may work for some folks. These, I don't know the answer. You guys are elected. You guys are elected officials, you're our bosses. It was nice to see you at that meeting the other night, by the way, Andy Hall also. We're counting on you. We actually insist on it. Do something, let's, let's make something happen, because it's not fair that we've allowed the most beautiful beach, and that's our gateway for tourists. And I just don't understand how we can just sit by as leaders and let that whole corner beach turn into where residents are saying, "I can't go there, I won't go there, and I won't walk that trail." That's our gem. You know, if it was the pier, I remember when the pier was just dilapidated and they offered the low-financing, you know, redevelopment, and it's beautiful. We need to focus on doing things properly.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thinking caps, thank you.
AQ, followed by Kathy S. Fahani, followed by Saul Martin.
You know, Councilmember Enmeyer, you know, your presentation, even though it was, it should have been done on your council comments and it wasn't on the agenda item, but however, in your presentation, you mentioned there was two sections where it said addiction and mental issues. Some of the homeless are dual diagnosis, and that's what I learned in nursing school many years ago. And I'm glad you're mentioning about data-driven, because that should have, that should have been included, the dual diagnosis. But I'm really concerned, though, that the term that people are using is NIMBY, because not in my backyard, because I heard it from people that were TCA, toll road supporters, and I fought very hard for years, six years, in fighting the toll roads. They were going to go through our established communities, businesses, parks, and recreation, so I really don't like that term. At the, I support, I went to the New, uh, North Beach Alliance meeting, Association meeting, and I spent here 50 years or more, I lived in San Clemente for 50 years and more, and half of that time I spent, lived and grew up in North Beach. And, you know, it's definitely not what it was when I grew up, and it shouldn't be that way at all. And I'm very proud of all the residents that came out and their voices were heard, and I hope they come out more often at the city council meetings to really let you know how, what they've gone through. So, all I want to say is that, oh, I also attended the Dana Point Coffee Chat meeting with Supervisor Katuna Foley, and she did mention about veterans that are homeless, and, and that was, you know, a concern, and we wouldn't want that, you know, in our community. However, I think the city manager brought up about charity and compassion, and I, and I understand that, but we, as a city and its residents, have a lot of compassion and a lot of charity, and we have a lot of heart, and we all come together, and it's that one team, one, one town, one team. And we use that term, San Clemente High School, as a, as an alumni. We used it for protecting us from the toll roads, and, and we really need to know, is, everybody needs to know, is that we do have a big heart. So, it's not, it's just that residents have had enough, they've dealt with a lot of issues, a lot of crimes, a lot of problems down there, and we need it stopped. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kathy S. Fahani. My husband and I live in North Beach and have been homeowners there for over 30 years. Last week, we attended the North Beach Community Meeting that was called to come up with salute, come up with solutions for the homelessness problem in our neighborhood. Unfortunately, there was little discussion of real solutions. Instead, the discussion focused almost entirely on punitive actions we could take, including things like stop churches from feeding unhoused people, close beach bathrooms, remove picnic tables, throw away people's tents and their possessions left in the open, conduct sweeps, write tickets, and arrest people for camping. All these suggestions were based on the same premise, that if we just make life more miserable in San Clemente for its unsheltered residents, they will leave town. Of course, that's exactly what Councilmember James told the crowd. Stealing from the City of Huntington Beach's playbook, he said San Clemente can solve its homelessness problem in 90 days. If we just adopt tough measures, we can drive unhoused people away. Well, the reality is that pursuing this punitive approach to homelessness will solve nothing. It won't chase people away. Many of San Clemente's unhoused residents have lived here for years. Some grew up here, this is home for them. Adopting a punitive approach is not only futile, it will get the city sued again, wasting more taxpayer funds. Instead, I propose we adopt a new constructive approach, aimed directly at solving the problem of homelessness in our town. Let's do what other cities in Orange County are doing. First, let's invite a nonprofit to open an emergency shelter in town with services provided to get people into more permanent housing. I've heard council members say that the city should not be in the business of opening and operating a shelter, but you don't have to open and operate the shelter. Just allow it to open and apply for some of the plentiful funds available from the county, state, and federal government. Second, let's encourage more permanent supportive housing in town so that people with mental illness and drug addiction can get off the streets and obtain the care they need. And third, let's encourage the development of affordable housing for very low and extremely low-income people. That will prevent people from becoming homeless and get homeless people off the street. So, I implore you to stop fear-mongering, stop making, Mr. James, don't make a claim that 25% of the homeless population in San Clemente is a sex offender without any facts. That only drives fear into the community, and it's the sort of thing that creates an environment for cruelty and abuse. And so, let's have responsible comments, and let's have a responsible approach to dealing with this problem.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, let me correct, Miss, well, no, I'm, no, she, no.
Well, Councilmember James, we don't want to get in the, we want to hear from the public.
I'm going to make a correction here. I never said that 25% of our homeless are sex offenders. I, I said-
Please, no comments from the, from the gallery, please.
I said the City of Fontana removed a number of, of vagrants, and they found 25% of them were sex offenders. I, I did not say anything about our vagrants.
Okay, next comment is-
Saul Martin.
And any more after that?
This is the final speaker.
This is the final one?
Hi, my name is Saul Martin, I'm a resident of San Clemente. I live about five blocks from North Beach, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for the work that all of you do for the city. I have a few photos that my wife and I took over the last few months that I'll, I'll leave with you guys when I'm done, but this is the kind of thing that's going on daily at North Beach, and I'm sure you're well aware, if you've visited at all, that the picnic table at North Beach is almost always occupied 100% of the time by the vagrants who live down there. And, you know, we've brought family and friends down to North Beach before, and it's very uncomfortable, there's no place to sit because the homeless people take up all the space. It feels unsafe by the way they look at you, the way they're cursing, shouting, drinking, using drugs, smoking, leaving garbage all over the place. It doesn't feel like a safe place to visit. The parking lot is another spot they hang out. They, they set up, you know, all kinds of shelters, semi-permanent shelters, tents, umbrellas. They use them until they're tattered and torn, and then they just leave them strewn all over the speech, all over the beach. There's a lot of garbage that I've picked up and thrown away, and that I know the city's been doing a great job over the last three weeks, maybe because we have a great new city manager who's doing a good job of directing the parks and, and the rangers to take care of the beaches. I do have noticed an improvement recently in the, in the pickup of the garbage left around by the homeless people. This photo we took on the beach about a month ago, it's a, it's a used needle, it's got black tar in it from my 10 years of firefighting and EMT work, I can virtually guarantee that that was used for heroin, for drugs. So, this is the kind of thing, thing that's getting left around on the beaches, and if you haven't seen it, please go down and see it, because it's like this every day. You don't, just pick a random day and go down there, and you'll see all the garbage. You'll just hang out a little bit down there and, and see the people, I mean, talk to them if you feel safe. I, I feel like, why is it all going on at North Beach? I'm down there regularly, I surf at 204s in North Beach at least a couple times a week, and what I see that's attracting the people there is, you know, Donna Vidrine and the Christ Lutheran Church people are good-hearted people, God bless them for wanting to reach out to homeless people, but unfortunately, they're attracting criminals and dangerous people to that one location by feeding them there every morning at 8:00. I know they want to do Bible studies down there, and that's fine, but when you're bringing bags and bags of groceries and hot breakfasts every morning at 8:00, it's going to attract these people, they're not going to leave. If we kick them out, they're just going to come back. If we arrest them, when they get out of jail, they're going to come back to this one spot because they're getting hot breakfasts every morning at 8:00.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments.
I'd like to leave these photos for-
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call for the question on my, on my motion on the, for a special meeting on March 28th, commenced at 6:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing the contract for a security agency with prior experience with dealing with so-called homeless.
I'll second.
I'm going to be out of town that day. I'm going to be out of town.
The motion is for a special meeting on homelessness on March 28th?
Steve, are you?
We have a, James, sorry, hold on a second, guys. James with the motion, and Cabral with the second, so now we're in discussion on it.
I will amend my motion to what date?
I'm available Monday, but Tuesday, the 28th, I'm done.
So, I'll amend my motion to Monday, March 27th at 6:00 PM.
I'll second.
Okay, so we, we have the motion from James and the second, Cabral. Now, I am, I'm supposed to be at the AIM High Certificate Ceremony for the Noble Path Foundation that night, starting at 6:00. So, can we move it to 7:00?
7:00, I'm, I'm fine with 7:00 PM.
7:00, okay. Okay, so the amendment, the friendly amendment to 7:00 PM, any, any other council members have conflict?
Refresh my memory, what's the purpose of this meeting again?
To review a contract with a security company by the name of Gatekeepers-
Gatekeeper Security.
Who-
That's the purpose of the meeting?
Yes.
Of that contract? Okay, thank you.
I, I just make a quick statement. Here we call, last meeting, we asked our city manager, unanimously voted to secure a security company. This would be the follow-up on that, a proposal by a private security company that will address this homeless issue once and for all. We, I've gone out and visited with them, I've seen their work, they're an extraordinary company, their owner lives here in San Clemente, and so I think what they've done in Oceanside is, is good, they're professional, and I, I think, well, we'll have a top, opportunity to talk about it at the next meeting, but I, I think the time is now for action, and let's talk.
Okay, so, as I understand, it's a follow-up to the, the direction we have already given to identify the security company. Now, city manager, is that enough time to be able to present enough information for council to be, make an educated decision on, on how to move forward?
I believe so, mayor, I can be prepared by then. I believe so.
Okay, well, we have the motion on the table. Councilmember Enmeyer.
Hi.
Mayor pro tempore.
All right.
And I'm an "I," so that's unanimous. We'll be back here on Monday. Yes, and now we have, Councilmember Enmeyer had a motion, and refresh our recollection as to what that motion was.
The motion is that the city staff come back with a long-term and short-term action plan for how to address homelessness in our city, not just, yeah, just going beyond just, just a, a security measure, but have a plan of action for our future.
And is there a timetable on, on when that should, would come back? I mean, there's a lot there.
Yes, there's a lot there, so I don't have a timetable per se. I would assume, you know, a, a month to come back with something tangible that we can do.
And I, I will certainly second that, is this, and is this building on the work that, that the Subcommittee, that Victor and you have been working on, and are you, I guess I'm asking, are you ready, do you think you've done enough on that Subcommittee that it's now appropriate to have staff get in and delve in on some of these longer-term solutions?
I believe we can. Mr. Cabral, if you wanted to weigh in on this at all?
Well, I'll tell you, your motion is surprising to me, so I, I haven't discussed it, I, I think we should have the opportunity to discuss it. I didn't see your presentation, so, you know, it's, I'd rather do that. I think we have another meeting scheduled, so I'd rather move along with our scheduled meetings and get, gather the information that we need so we can, there are many other issues, but I think the twofold approach that we've, we're talking about right now with, would work best if we discuss it at a committee level.
I'm, I'm just worried that if we don't get this ball moving now, we're going to be waiting until June before we have something to come back to the staff and say, "Hey, can, can we get something in motion, some plans going?"
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm a little confused by this, because Mr. Cabral and Mr. Enmeyer are members of that Subcommittee. I would think that Subcommittee comes back and reports to the full council and then give direction to the city manager.
Okay, fair enough. Councilmember Enmeyer, is there a reason why it would be appropriate now to give staff direction when we haven't actually had the Subcommittee? It's, it's a decent point, we haven't had the Subcommittee present back to us sort of conclusions or findings of the Subcommittee.
Yeah, my worry was that with the previous motion, we're going to go down one path that is not comprehensive and won't actually solve homelessness, and so we'll be looking at just one branch that is a very important part of solving homelessness, but not looking at a more comprehensive approach, and that if we, if we just do this one, we'll say, "Oh, homelessness is solved," when there's a lot more that needs to be done. And so, my, this is why I want to bring it to city now instead of waiting for a while.
And it sounds like what you're saying is you just may move the problem to another part of the city.
Mr. Mayor, it's not the city's role to solve homelessness, it's the city's role to protect the citizens of this committee, protect the-
Let's say to-
I, I allowed you to speak, sir. It's the city's role to provide equality of life and public safety, and this is a quality of life and public safety issue. We can talk about how to coordinate with our county and state partners, but primarily, our role is public safety and quality of life.
Any further questions or debate on this? We do have a motion and a second.
I'll just change it, instead of solving homeless, I'll say addressing homelessness in our city.
Okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll second it under that premise.
What was the modification?
That our city come back, our city, to direct our city staff to come back with an action plan on how to address homelessness in our city, short-term and long-term goals.
Speaking to the motion, I, I agree with comments I heard earlier that we have a Subcommittee that is specifically looking at that very issue. I'd like the Subcommittee to complete its work, at least to the point as far as you can, and then come back with that recommendation. So, I, I, I think, I think it's not timely, I, I agree with the sentiment, but, but if there's still meetings scheduled, I'd like to see, hear the result of those meetings before we put the burden on staff to come up with solutions that you haven't completely recommended. So, I, I can't support the motion, unfortunately, the sentiment, but I think timing is, is not quite right.
And I would only add, Mark, that I think we have been looking at the homeless issue as a regional issue, and, and I've, I'm committed to working, you know, I have a different view than you probably, it's, I believe it's a state issue and a county issue, and that, you know, if there's going to be a shelter, it's got to be in the county or state property, but we're still, I'm still committed to looking at it from a state and county perspective outside of San Clemente.
Okay.
I'd make a substitute motion, that we, we table the motion on the, on the floor until the Subcommittee's completed its work.
Second.
Okay, the, okay, that, we have a substitute motion by No Block, second by James, so we will go with the substitute motion first to, to not have staff work on a comprehensive solution at this- this time and wait until after the subcommittee reports back. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any discussion on that substitute motion? Okay, councilmember Enmeyer?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm a no, in that that motion passes three to two with Enmeyer and Duncan as the So does that supersede the other motion?
It moves it also.
Okay, moves the other motion. That's a better word.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just take a point of personal privilege and recognize two former mayors that are in our audience this evening.
Yes, Kathy Ward and Bob Baker. Thank you both for coming. All right, okay.
I don't know what they're up to, but they're here.
Plotting.
I knew that, Bob.
No comments from the gallery. Okay, do we have a motion regarding, I think you were going to get to this before, Steve, the motion for waiving reading a full of...
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. That motion is Noblock, second James. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone interested in consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action? Okay, seeing none, move on to our closed session report from the city attorney.
Thanks, Mayor and council. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
And Laura, do you want to handle the consent calendar?
Moving on to consent, we have three items polled by the public. Item 6A, item 6F, and item 6L.
F as in Frank, did you say?
Yes.
And I'm going to recuse myself from item D, which is because of proximity to my home to the project involved. So I'll be an abstention on D.
I have a question on that, Mr. City Attorney. There's no financial, Mr. Noblock has no financial interest. This is just a learning for me. Mr. Noblock has no financial interest, but it is in proximity. Is he required to recuse himself?
If he... Is it for all of us? Is that everyone, right? Everybody, everybody.
Yeah. Sorry. I haven't heard that before.
If, Mayor and council...
How is that better? Just a moment. Can you, is this better?
Yes.
Better? Okay, so I guess we just need to have our microphones closer.
Put it closer.
Hello?
Can we all test it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Test, can you hear me?
Please test it, see if it can work.
It's not working. Your one maybe? I got the thumbs up from Michelle. Test, test? Okay, and they've already heard me, so, okay.
If I could respond, the councilmember James asked the city attorney about the potential conflict. And let me just quickly mention, I recused myself when this item first came up because it involved tree removal, which did impact my personal view. I did have a personal interest. I abstained when the contract was let, and this is an acceptance of the terms of the contract, and I just assumed not be involved in agreeing because I abstained the first time.
I understand. It wasn't that I got to, it was just I was trying to understand.
Yeah, no, it's just strictly my proximity.
Never mind, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, so the public has polled 6A, 6F as in Frank, 6L?
Correct.
And then we have, Mayor Protim Noblock is abstaining from 6D, so when we move the balance, he will abstain from that vote. Any other council members would like to poll any of the other consent?
Just a quick question for clarification. Would it be recommended from council that I, or from our city lawyer, that I abstain from D as well, or is that...
Mayor and council, the rule of thumb is whether a resident lies within 500 feet of the improvements. So if they do, then I would suggest, yes, you recuse yourself. But the proximity of your home to these corridors, I'm not sure of.
If I, I'm probably like 450 feet, so I'll just abstain from it as well, just to be safe.
Is it recuse or abstain?
Well, it's abstain here, and you know what? That's a good question, because this is not contested. It still stands in the uncontested list of consent items, so then you just need to abstain. If it was polled and considered alone, you have to recuse and leave the room.
Mr. Mayor, somewhere along the line, something's been lost, because when I first came on council, staff would do that research and let us know that it was within 500 feet of our residence or something we had a financial interest in. I think that's dropped off at some point in time.
No, they still do it. I've been notified.
Oh, you were notified?
Each time.
I was notified. My house is like, if you look at the line where it goes around, it's just, it comes right next to it.
We were notified.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. It's possible that so many homes are affected by these corridors that you're qualified anyway, but that's a different numeric threshold that we haven't run.
We don't think we have that here, because we only have two that have abstained, but, okay, any other items?
In all the excitement, did F get polled?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone have a motion to move the balance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it is James with a second from Enmeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have the abstentions noted for D, but all of them do pass. So, city clerk?
First item polled by the public is item 6A, and that was polled by Donna Vidreen.
Hello, my name is Donna Vidreen, and I am speaking to 6A City Council minutes from March 7th. Under new business 9A, implementation of emergency actions to assist unsheltered individuals during time of inclement weather. My question is, do the minutes from the city council meeting on March 7th accurately reflect the votes and direction of council? Did the majority of council vote directing the city manager to utilize emergency funds up to $50,000 available for unsheltered persons during our winter storms to instead fund private security personnel with the intent to relocate those without shelter from North Beach to other public spaces in San Clemente? Relocating homeless unsheltered during inclement weather without sheltering options or sheltering plan is not a best practice. To follow was a motion by councilmember James to collaborate with the County of Orange with the direction no shelters are to be built in San Clemente. Is this lawful direction? No shelters to be built in San Clemente? Can the city attorney opine on this direction by council? Why do we keep hearing from Councilman James, there will be no shelter in San Clemente? Doesn't every city provide a designated area for a shelter to be built within their city? There are three lawyers on the dais. Is this lawful direction to give our city manager and city staff? This motion was approved by a majority vote. I spoke on 3/7, on March 7th, in support of staff recommendations to provide emergency assistance to the unsheltered in San Clemente during the extreme cold and rainy days and nights. To provide individuals experiencing homelessness a safe and supportive short-term shelter during severely inclement weather. To protect individuals from rain and cold, to avoid conditions such as hypothermia, pneumonia, and other conditions caused by cold temperatures. We have San Clemente unhoused, sleeping on the streets and public spaces, requesting shelter access with no shelter available. I have my public comments from March 7th in written form to submit to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
I have a motion to move this item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is James, second Cabral. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is 6F, AQ is the speaker that pulled the item.
You know, when this, when I saw this on the agenda, I was really concerned at first. I mean, I wasn't concerned, because, you know, of course, we want safety for our residents. But then when I looked a little further, I'm just, I looked on Google Map and drove by it, and we do have a bike lane and on Pico on both sides, however, there is areas where we don't have them. And it's my understanding that there isn't one in front of McDonald's or Starbucks. And it would require the use of eminent, or the taking of land through eminent domain for a bike lane, or we would, there's a potential of losing a lane altogether on Avenida Pico going westbound. So then, of course, we can't expand the wall on the north side of Avenida Pico because of the huge retaining wall that's right below St. Andrews, and that is unstable land, which is monitoring land formation. And I'm also concerned regarding the Class 1 bike lane and pedestrian lanes that will basically go through, I think, the, which was, which is the, which is owned by, I guess, Ed Connor. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the city still in litigation with Ed Connor regarding the 10 acres of land? So that's a big issue. Also, if we're going to take land, are we going to cut all those trees, all those eucalyptus trees, to make this pedestrian and bike lane? So I'm concerned about that. So I'm concerned about how much traffic we're going to cause in that area, how much congestion, and I certainly don't want a toll road, and I don't want anything to trigger that from happening. And so I'm really concerned about this. I know there's so many issues I've been speaking about, but it's because, you know, it really matters to me, and it matters to the residents who fought really hard in protecting our town. But thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Zach, are you here for this item? Okay, my apologies, we should have had the staff presentation first, but here we are. So actually, number of concerns raised there that maybe you can address.
So, good evening, Zach Ponson, Assistant City Engineer. This item is on consent, so I don't have a presentation, but I'm able to answer any questions, if you have any, and then I can also answer any that she brought up also.
Would council like him to address some of the items brought up by the speaker a moment ago?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, ultimately, what you have in front of you tonight is an amendment to a professional services agreement that the city council has already authorized. Current city staff is getting this project restarted, and in doing so, we've asked that consultant to reanalyze the traffic models that are on Pico to make sure it's per the latest Los Petronas connection. So what you have in front of you is a $16,500 amendment to add in the latest city's housing element, which addresses some increased traffic flow on our main arterial roads. So therefore, that original contract that council approved back in very late 2021 looks at two different projects. A Class 1 separated bike lane, which would be from Frontera up to Veracruz, and then also a Class 2 bike lane, which is a shared, a buffered bike lane, but within the ride of way, within Frontera to the freeway. And so this amendment is simply just going to continue that design. We expect to come back for you in possibly late summer, mid to late summer, and that's when we'll be looking at the actual projects for consideration.
And Zach, we, the city asked that they do this additional study, right? So the city sort of prompted the need for this additional funding?
Correct.
Okay. This wasn't that the contractor came up with this and presented it to us?
No, it was actually me taking over. We had to make sure, since there was so much time in between three different traffic engineers, we wanted to make sure that the latest studies were incorporated. So one of the projects coming in, in front of the high school, is really a conceptual design that you'll see this summer, where the consultant and staff will be coming forward with multiple options. And so we can't come forward with an option without looking at that study of the traffic, what will actually happen.
What about the statements about there potentially being the need for eminent domain in order to carry this project forward? Is that, and I know it's sort of conceptual at this point, is that something that is a potential, you think, or we won't know until they come back with the options?
That's part of the study of what they're looking into, of those options, with and with and without losing a lane, what can we squeeze in there? Can they do stuff with just the median and shrink in the median? Can they do stuff? And they're looking at all those different options. So we'll come back with two or three.
Sure.
The highest recommendations for that stretch in front of the high school.
So we'll have another bite at the apple then to decide which way we want to go.
So that's where we'll know if the traffic impacts. So this is going to give us that study and that science behind it before we show up with any sort of recommendation.
Councilmember Cabral?
I should say, this is just a minor amendment to a contract, and we will find out, we'll find out when the report's done, so.
Yes.
I don't know if anyone else has any questions. If not, I'm ready to move it.
I just have a quick question. I'm not sure I'm following why there's an increase in the cost of this contract.
The, there's $16,500, $8,000 of it is for project management, and I will, that is at staff. We've lost, this is the third traffic engineer we've gone through, and so there's extended a period of time that we've, I technically got in charge and basically put the project on hold. To also look into some of the questions that Amanda's raised, is this on private property? Was this an idea that was approved?
My questions are answered.
Yeah, it's...
Okay, motion was Cabral. Was there a second?
I'll second.
Second Noblock to move the item. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you, Zach. By the way, Zach Ponson has done an incredible job up there in Buena Vista, so thank you and Robert Ferguson for stepping up. You guys have been terrific.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good for you.
Okay, and then just...
Contract amendment as needed. Building Plan Check Services was also polled by the public, and AQ is the speaker on this item.
Okay. And Mr. Holden, great job as well up in Buena Vista. Thank you. And thanks for you supervising that great staff, because you're obviously doing a great job. Everybody pulled together, appreciate it. So do you, are you able to present on this? And do you have any comments?
I thought Q came up.
AQ.
AQ again, okay. We'll do, but first, we'll do the staff presentation.
Okay. I don't have a presentation as well, since it was on consent. But what this is, an amendment to an existing contract with an outside plan review service. This will increase the contract amount from $385,000 to $485,000, increase of $100,000. What this contract is for is we do not have a senior plan check engineer, and we haven't had one for about, just about two years now. So some of our plans, the more complicated plans, are sent to WC3. The funds for this outside plan review is actually paid by the applicant for, we charge plan review fees. The outside plan check company charges us 65% of what we collect for plan review fees. They do the plans for us, return them, so we can continue doing plan review and issuing permits. So this $100,000 is really paid for. It's just a cap on the contract, but the monies are derived from plan check fees.
Okay. All right, yes, let's hear the comment.
And thank you for the, I appreciate that staff report. One of the reasons why I wanted to, you know, look at, comment was because when I looked at the legislative lobbying contract, I looked on the contract that was on at the last city council meeting, and there were a lot of problems there. So I started looking at this, and I think there was one year where there was two increases of $100,000. So I'm concerned about how much we're paying out each time, and there's just, I think it was at the sixth amendment of this contract, and that's a lot. But my concern is, we really, I mean, I hope that we, the staff and the city manager did a really thorough check on this, because, I mean, I just saw it briefly today, and I just thought, wait a minute, am I looking at it? I mean, it's just one contract, one amendment after another, and one increase after another, but I understand that there isn't any senior planning engineer to do the job, so I understand that, but... that. But we just have to make sure that, you know, we, we look at the contract thoroughly, all contracts thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, city manager, could you shed a little bit of light on the larger kind of picture here that was discussed about, you know, our building, you know, and planning departments there, and what our staffing is like, and why we need a contract like this?
Sure, and Mr. Holden, may I add to this as well?
I know you've been here all three weeks.
Yeah, well, we would like, though, to have our own staff, and we would like to have a senior plans examiner to be able to do this work. At the current time, that position is vacant, and we haven't been able to fill that. So again, we don't want the applicants to have to, to pay that price, that time, that time price of us not having staff. So what we do is, we do farm these out, so that the plan check can continue, while we continue to try to recruit that position, and I think we've been trying to recruit it for some time. It's, I think most cities, as you know, especially in the technical positions, have had a very difficult time filling positions, and us included. So, Mr. Holden, I don't know if you have anything to add, but we're trying to fill that position.
Actually, sort of good news, we've tried for a long time to get a qualified applicant. Tomorrow, we're actually interviewing one. Hopefully, he will be qualified and willing to come to work for us. And, and this money is, is just a cap, it's not, we're not going to spend that. If we hire this individual, then we will cease sending out our plans, we'll be able to do them in-house.
Okay. Fantastic, that's good news. Councilmember Cabral.
Yeah, I'd like to move this item.
Okay.
Second.
Is Cabral and James on the motion? All in favor? Aye. It is unanimous.
Mayor, before we move on to public hearings, can I just carve out Item 6D, Notice of Completion Tree and Palm Planting on Cali del Cerro and Avenida Vista, Montana? Councilmember Inmeyer seconded the motion to move the entire consent calendar, but because he abstained from this item, can we just get a second vote on Item 6D?
I'll second.
Second.
Cabral, I think, was first there.
So Cabral, second by James.
Cabral, okay.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote again? Yeah, do we have to vote to move the balance then, again?
No, we were just separating out Item 6D.
Okay. Oh, just for 60?
Yes. And if you're ready, we can move on to Item 7A, public hearing.
Okay, 7A, and.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I address Item 7A? So, the parties were here, whatever it was, 60 days ago, I believe. We spent, I believe, somewhere upwards to an hour and a half, hearing testimony in a public hearing from, from the parties and various supporters and detractors of, of the parties. Quite honestly, I would like to limit public debate this evening on it. I, I'm prepared to, to vote on this, on this issue, but.
Well, let's not get ahead of ourselves, it's a public hearing, we need to make sure we hear every lead first.
Well, the thing is, I, I just don't think we should.
Agreed.
We need to limit.
What are you thinking for the timing?
Three minutes.
Okay. So, and is there a second for that? Okay, so James and Cabral. So that, that just means, instead of the normal 10 minutes, we give people for public hearings, we would limit it to three minutes, since we, they have already gotten their 10-minute allotment the last time, and we're now just hearing this item again. Does anyone have any issues with three minutes?
Because, to clarify, Mayor, that non-stakeholders would also be given three minutes, because there may be third parties that want to speak.
Okay. So three minutes for all parties, including the stakeholders, okay. All right. Do we need to vote on that, or are we?
Yeah, I think that would be good to note that for the minutes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, there's no, no opposition, so it's unanimous. I, I would just like to note, as, and this sort of builds on what Councilmember James was saying, we, we have a very narrow responsibility here, and I think everyone should keep that in mind. We're not looking at the larger, broader picture, we're just looking at the proposed revocation of the, of the encroachment permit in this particular case, right? So let's focus in on that for all, all speakers, and that should help narrow down everyone's comments. I do have some advisements I have to give. As we start this, this item is an appeal of the city engineer's revocation of an encroachment permit, as I indicated. City council has reviewed all submitted evidence and spent considerable time at a prior hearing on this matter, is prepared to listen to all evidence and testimony presented during this hearing, and to render an impartial judgment based on the evidence before us at this appeal. The appeal will proceed as follows. City staff will first present a staff report, thank you, Kyle and Zach, and I will open the hearing, and I'll ask, well, we've, we've already covered the time allotment. So representatives for the appellant will have three minutes to present their response to the appeal, and then members of the city council may ask questions of the appellant or city staff at that time. Members of the public will then have an opportunity to comment on the application, that will be three minutes as well, and barring any other, okay, no other issues, we are now ready to proceed in the matter.
Mayor, I'm sorry, could I just, the city clerk asked for a really good point of clarification. We're talking about representatives of stakeholders, there are two competing property owners here.
Yes.
I think you'd expect there are three minutes from each ownership, not from each member of the extended family. If, if you're one of the owners, then you're sharing three minutes.
That, that's a great point, and because we did hear from so many parties before, of course, that, all that record is before us, so please, just three minutes from each, from one representative of each side, and then any members of the public. All right, so first, it is staff.
Ready for the staff presentation?
Mayor, councilmembers, Kyle Cogar, Public Works Director. You've seen most of this presentation before, I'll be brief and get through it. A little background, the Conleys reside at 4055 Via Menzana in San Clemente. The Irians live at 2701 Pacia Activo in San Juan Capistrano. The city limit line runs between the two properties. In May of last year, the Conleys applied for and were awarded an AEP to maintain the area in question, with the understanding that the Irians would be allowed access to their property through this area in the future if needed, and the permit may be revoked at any time. In November of last year, the Irian's permit was verbally approved after several submittals, and the Conleys were notified in writing that their permit was being revoked per the signed AEP. In December of last year, the city council received and filed staff's report on the summary of the Conley AEP and revocation of the permit, and January of this year, initial hearing of appeal was heard and continued until tonight. Here's a site plan to kind of show you what's going on. The blue is the Irian property, the brown is the Conley property, the green is the area in question, that is city right-of-way, which adjoins the Irian's property. In our municipal code and in the state code, it basically says that the parkway or the, the property, the right-of-way in front of a portion of a property is to be maintained by the property owner, and I'm not going to read all that to you. And that's the state code, and with that, staff recommends that the city council affirm staff's decision revoking the AEP E220112. That's all.
Okay. Any questions for staff before we get into the, yeah?
I have one question. Do you have any photos of, of those two properties, the, the maintenance of that, that land?
I don't, but I, I believe the, the property owners.
We've been presented in the past, that's fine. So if you could go back to the site plan. So to be clear, the, the area in question is what's in green.
Yes, sir.
And that's the city's right-of-way.
That's the city right-of-way, and the adjoining white property is also city right-of-way.
So that's not the Irian's property, and that's not, not necessarily the Conley's property, is that correct?
It's city-owned property, correct.
So what we have here is a dispute over city right-of-way, is that correct?
Yes, sir, the maintenance, yes, sir.
And the, the Conleys have maintained that right-of-way for how long?
30 years.
30 years. Okay. Those are the only questions I have.
Following on that, isn't it usually the case that the property owner adjacent to the city property doesn't necessarily want to, want to take care of that city property, but has to because they're adjacent to it?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's your usual case. So we are sort of in the opposite of the usual case, because here you have a property owner that is not directly adjacent, but still wants to take care of that property and landscape it, and, and in a way that looks good, I guess.
Correct.
Okay. That's the scenario we find ourselves in. Any other questions for staff before we hear from the appellant, Judge Conley?
None.
Oh, okay. So with that, it's appellant first, right? Okay. Judge Conley?
John Conley and Sharon Conley.
With your new timing, I think it'll just be one of us.
Yes, yeah, or you could split the three minutes between two.
Okay. Some brief comments. First, thank you for your time. With slope sliding and everything else happening in your life and in the life of the city, it's hard to focus on this little problem, but it's a big problem for us. In response to the council, we have met with the Irians, met for two hours and tried to work it out. Both sides have met with the city, new city manager, and tried to work it out. We have not been able to. Some response to the staff. The municipal code and highway codes do not answer the question of what happens when there's two people from separate cities, both of whom are adjacent to a right-of-way. So don't think, I think the mayor made the comment, well, the law is clear or something last time. It isn't clear at all. You're in uncharted territory. Yes, the permit permits further modifications at any time, but there's a duty of fair play involved in dealing with your own citizens. You give them a permit, they spend $11,000, whoops, you take the permit back. That's not fair. And for the lawyers, a stop will applies to cities. The agenda report said that the permit was issued with the understanding that if the Irians wanted access, well, everything would go away. Well, you had our attorney come, Bill Baker, last time, saying that was not it. Why would we have agreed to put in $11,000 into this if the Irians could go, well, we need access? And you can see by the, they don't really need access. That's a phony issue. The other thing you should be aware of is, the proposal, as you see it up there, the Irians are proposing a block wall along the sidewalk, where suddenly, they, as San Juan Capistrano residents, would block in the city's right-of-way. That's a subtle point, did you catch that? They want to enclose your right-of-way, and that's wrong. That would be de facto ownership. And the other comments that we have to make is, what's really happening here? We have Mr. Ponson telling my daughter, this is really a done deal. And then when we meet with, with the Irians, Mitch Irian keeps repeating, this is a done deal, it's already been decided. Really? Then this is a farce, and I hope it isn't a farce. But done deal is very upsetting. So what have we got here? We've got an idea that they need access to their property. Not really, but if you buy that.
Sorry, Judge, thank you very much, I think we understand where you're coming from, appreciate that. So now, the opponents, I guess, are the.
Mitch and Arlene Irian.
What are they?
I don't know, the appellant? Is there a technical term, city attorney, for the party that opposes the appellant?
No.
No, okay, okay.
No, that's why I just see.
If there was, we would use the term, but.
Prime stakeholder.
Stakeholder, yeah.
Good evening, thank you again for listening to this, we don't want to drag this out. Mr. Hall, thank you so much for coming to us and trying to, to work this out. Mr. Cabral, thank you for answering our email and forwarding that to Mr. Hall. I, I don't think that possibly you're aware that we've been working with the city, both City of San Clemente and the City of San Juan, since August of 2021. Everything that has been stated to us, but has been that we followed every directive by both cities, the law, the visual depictions, have all said that we are responsible for controlling that area. So with those, with all that information given to us, we moved forward since August of 2021, and starting to, to develop what we want to, when we recognized back in January of 2021 that the land is really ours. We didn't really realize that until two years ago, when we've been there for 27 years. So for, since August 21, we've been moving in this direction. So maybe you didn't know that, but then everything came to a complete halt, when suddenly, the Conley were, Conleys were given an AEP. We had no idea. The city had directed us, San Clemente, to move forward, that we could move forward. And, and so we were. We were waiting for directives from San Juan to get the clearance to remove traffic devices, and while we were waiting, the Conley AEP was approved. That was a shock to us, because everything San Clemente said was moving us forward. So in any event, just to say that, well, we still want to resolve this matter. We still want to, we do not want to be tone deaf to the Conleys or to our neighbors. It has been very well maintained for 30 years, and our intention and plan is to continue to do that, because we have the legal right, the law is on our side. There isn't any other law that any of us know of that applies to this than what Mr. Cogar has presented. So Mitch will present to you what our intention is, as the legal property owners of that area, nobody else is controlling anybody else's property. No neighbor controls another neighbor's property. And we're just asking that they control theirs, they have been for 30 years, the frontage of their home, we're not asking for anything more, but what is our legal right to do, and every San Clemente resident has? So, okay, go ahead, Mitch.
And we made a proposal and a change that we proposed to the Conleys, to try to make it more appealing, and so that it works for them. And the thought was that we'd move the wall back.
I'm sorry, that, your, your time is up.
Okay.
Sorry.
Did you have any questions?
Mayor, can we go back to Mr. Cogar's diagram of the property?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, your, your time is up, I'm, I'm sorry, we have to keep to the three minutes. Do we want to hear the other comments first?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, there are, okay.
Next speaker is William Cunningham, followed by Brian Dempsey.
Good evening, my name is Bill Cunningham. I've been a resident of San Clemente for 30 years. My wife and I have lived in the same home for 42 years now. Our immediate neighbors are the Conleys, and about 70 feet northeast of us is where the Irian's property is. The Irians and the Conleys' attempt to mediate their differences over the encroachment permit have failed. I want to give a little insight on that and propose a possible suggestion for resolution. On December 7, 2022, Mr. Irian walked over to the front of my house, where I was doing yard work. It was the day after a San Clemente city council meeting. Mr. Irian wasn't present at that meeting. He indicated he saw me on the council's streamed video give my support for the Conleys to retain their encroachment permit. During our conversation, Mr. Irian told me that, and I quote, "None of this would have happened if the Conleys hadn't threatened legal action," which the Conleys deny. All of the contentious and intentionally harmful events that have occurred over the last year and a half began right after that argument between the Irians and the Conleys. All the actions taken by the Irians were a means to an end, an expediency to prevail over the Conleys in their argument. Emotions ruled over reason. And here we are. Coming to a decision that is as equitable as possible in this very contentious situation will not satisfy either party completely. This is not a winner-take-all situation. However, a simple solution could be to grant the Irians the right to have their walkway cross over the public right-of-way space through the parcel, which the Conleys currently maintain. A reasonable assessment of the placement of that walkway, as shown A reasonable assessment of the placement of that walkway, as shown on the Arians' plot plan, may be that it is so close to the front of the Conleys' home that it could be considered retaliatory. Perhaps require the walkway to be located further east, 10 or 20 feet from where it currently is shown. That would give the Arians what they claim they want. They say they want access. That would give them access to their property and their proposed pergola, if they build one. For the Conleys, a resolution for them could be that they be able to continue to maintain the land parcel, with the Arians' walkway cutting through the landscape. This would mean no border wall to be built if the Conleys were to be able to maintain that landscape. The Arians asked for access. They didn't ask to enclose that public space with a border wall. This is a compromise. The Arians get access. The Conleys get to continue to maintain a modified version of the property that they have for 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Final speaker is Brian Dempsey.
Gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for your consideration of this agenda item. Once again, I'm going to take 10 seconds. Next slide. Next slide. This is what the Conleys do. Next slide. That's what the Arians do. They destroyed the Conley's property and replaced it with weeds. Next slide. Next slide. There's a landslide about to destroy the slope. You see flat blue in your diagram. It is a slope of severity. This picture was taken Sunday night. The pergola may fall down that slope. You have a responsibility to look at this in a reasonable fashion as to whether the Conleys are responsible for good work and deeds or whether the Arians are responsible... I won't use the phrase. Those are facts. Thank you for consideration. We, the neighbors, support the Conleys.
Thank you, sir. That was the final comment?
Final comment.
Okay.
Close the public hearing?
Closing the public hearing? I'm not sure I opened the public hearing. We're closing the public hearing. All right. Anyone want to start the discussion here?
I have a question of staff.
Or question of staff?
Just the green area in there, that belongs to the city. What about the white area on the right, near the sidewalk? Is that also our property?
Let me stand up and I'll just point out...
Oh, yeah.
So all of this, the white, is city right-of-way. So the city owns it.
Okay.
The area that there is a question is just the green.
Okay. So there's more city property where there could be access?
Yeah. So this is in front of the Conleys, or what I would say adjoining a Conley's property. So I would say they maintain this right-of-way. This is in front of the Arians' property. So I would say they would maintain, you know, all this white area.
Thank you.
I get a quick question. If a wall were built right there, a two- to three-foot wall, how much would that impact our access, say, if there were a brush fire behind there or what the city would need?
They would put in drought-tolerant landscaping, so I wouldn't anticipate a brush fire or anything of that nature. The Arians, further to the east, have what I call like a border wall, a two-to-three-foot wall that runs along their property line just at the back of the sidewalk. So they already have some walls on their property.
I got to tell you, I think what the Conleys are doing here is very reasonable. It's not, it's not the Arians' property. It's not the Conley's property. It is the property of the City of San Clemente. And the Conleys have been kind enough over the past 30-some years to keep that piece of property. It's a small piece of property. What's the dimensions of that property?
I know it's about 38 feet in length. I'm not sure of the width. It varies.
It might be, it might be eight feet at its deepest point. I'm going to, you know, absence anyone else having anything to say, I'm going to have a motion on this. And that is, one, reverse the declination; two, reinstate the encroachment permit for the Conleys; and number three, ratify our resolution at our next April the 4 meeting, giving the Conleys a encroachment permit.
I'll second that.
The third part is necessary. I don't believe, city attorney, if we rescind the revocation, the encroachment permit remains in existence, correct?
Right. It will be the, we just want the resolution to come back under the appeals ordinance to ratify this action. It'll contain findings for...
Was there a motion or a second? Call for this question.
Any further, any further discussion?
Question's been called.
Okay. Seeing none. We have a motion, as I understand it, to...
Reverse the declination?
Well, reverse the revocation.
Reverse the revocation is a better word.
Reverse the revocation and then bring back a resolution that would essentially formalize that reversal.
Right. And reinstate the encroachment permit for the Conleys.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Enmire.
Go ahead.
You want me to start on this end?
Yeah, well, I just want to ask, with this, would the Arians still have a path toward their pergola that they're going to create?
They could.
That would be determined at a later point.
That's the answer. That could be determined at a later point. The right to maintain and care for this city property now, under the encroachment, is exclusive to the Conleys. So, but that could be altered later, when and if a proposal comes in for a specific pathway.
But they could have access.
That's why, that's why I think we, well, that's why I think it was a little premature because actually, I mean, just to be clear, if the Conleys have an encroachment permit and we got an application from the Arians for an encroachment permit in the same area, we could modify the Conleys, we could narrow it slightly if we wanted to, or we could deny the subsequent application.
That's right. The existing, the Conley encroachment is revocable and therefore could be modified by the council at any time.
Yeah. And I just want to point out, we, I think generally, you know, we follow staff on this. This is just a highly unusual situation. It's the reverse of the normal situation. You have a landowner, homeowner, who has not had the obligation to maintain property, but has well-maintained property for a long period of time. Now you have a situation where an adjacent landowner wants to, wants to potentially do something else, but this is the city's land. And so I think for my purposes and understanding this more thoroughly now, and I wish the parties had worked it out, but that didn't happen, I think the equitable result, especially because of the investment of the Conleys into this land, is to, is to reverse the revocation and allow the encroachment permit. So that's where I'm coming out with. Councilmember Enmire?
Yeah, I can go along with that, just as long as I understand that they want to build a pathway there in the future. They can still have that right to do that.
Well, they can apply, and then the city gets to control how that might look. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'll say yes.
Okay.
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye too. It's unanimous.
Mayor, may I move to have a 10-minute recess?
Any problems with that? Five minutes. Okay. Five minutes enough? We will reconvene at 4:40. I mean, 8:40. I don't know where that four came from.
That's not, is it 9:30 or is it 8:30?
Yeah, that's what, that's...
Is that still on?
Wait. No, now it is right.
Someone fixed it.
Okay.
Q, go grab the mayor.
The next item on the, the next item on the agenda is Madam Clerk.
Contract award legislative advocacy services.
Okay, do we have a staff report on this item?
Apart from the city manager?
Meetings in session. Let, let the record show that the mayor's back, taking over the chair of the meeting.
Been a rough night for the mayor. Okay, um, let's, uh, let's move on to the, the next item in unfinished business. Okay, I'll join in midway then, an unfinished business. Do we have any staff presentation on 8A?
Yes, Mayor, as opened by the Mayor Pro Tem, we're ready to move on to the next item. Hey, just in reaction to some direction given by the city council, staff has returned for consideration of a contract with Apria and Michelli to provide advocacy services to the city. The city, the city council did provide direction to the city manager and staff to make sure that we come back with a contract that is driven by an as need basis rather than doing something on retainer. So we have returned and the contract now has been modified so that the, we still have the relationship with the consulting firm, but it would be on an as need basis only, it'd be on an hourly basis rather than on a retainer. So I think that that was the direction of the city council, that's what you have before you, if you have any questions, let us know, but that other than that, I think it's a fairly straightforward item.
Any discussion or, no discussion, we have motion. I'll, I'll move to approve.
We do have a speaker card.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A Q.
Do you have a presentation? So, next slide, please. So, at the last city council meeting, uh, city manager and I spoke and informing there was an error on the, um, agenda. However, there was also an under error on the staff report and the contract, and that's a concern, and the admission requires some level of accountability. Basically, the city managed, in that contract and in the current contract, um, this section mentions that the city manager and city representative, there's two jobs in one. But one, as the city representative, um, does not have the authority to enlarge the scope of work. However, as the city manager, he does have the scope, I mean, the ability to, um, enlarge the scope of work. So basically, you have the city manager and city representative, the same person, but wearing two different hats at one time, basically, oh, not at one time, but takes off one, then puts on the other. So that is a flawed contract. Next slide, please. Um, they, basically, the services and duties are more particularly described in Exhibit A, but if you look at Exhibit A, it just says, "Scope of Services: Legislative Advocacy Services." And I know in the current, uh, contract, it does spell it out, but in previously, it did not, in the prior contract that was on, at the last city council meeting. Next slide, please. So, uh, fees, there was no breakdown, no accounting of the work product, just pay, pay me $15,000 a month. And, um, next slide, please. Here's another area where, however, it doesn't, it says, "Consultants should not be reimbursed for any expenses unless in writing or included in Exhibit D of the agreement." There is no Exhibit D, it's none. It's not in this current contract, but it was, um, at the city council meeting, at the last city council meeting. Next slide, please. Who is insert name and title, and I'm glad the city manager caught that mistake for this current, um, contract, but it sure wasn't in the prior contract. Scott Smith, or Eric Sun, or whomever drafted this document, document should have caught the glaring mistakes and it should have been done. Next con, next page, please. This contract, as it was written back in, when it was on the city council, last city council, should not be extended because they only could extend it for one time, so I'm glad now there's a modification. However, they, they didn't mention that. You know, Apria McKelly knew, and they didn't do that, so.
Thank you, time's up, sorry.
Failure of public trust.
Okay. All right, any other comment?
I do have some comments about this.
No more from the public, though, okay.
No more public comments.
Mark Apria did great work for us during the, the battle we had with the toll road. He was a great source of, of intelligence for us of what was going on in, in Sacramento. On one occasion, I, I walked through the halls of the state capitol with him, and this guy knows everyone, from the majority leader to, to, to the speaker, to people coming in and out of the governor's office, to the janitor. He is, he is wired in Sacramento. It's prob, I, I think it's time to cut our ties with a, a $15,000 retainer with Mr. Apria, because I'm not, I'm not sure what we, you know, what we have going. But he, he's a great gatekeeper for us. Uh, he, he has his fingers on the pulse of, of Sacramento, and, um, just recently, he provided us some intelligence of what was going on in Sacramento, and I'm, I'm not going to reveal what that was, um, but it was something significant that would impact our city. So I'm gonna be inclined to vote for this, um, this $300 an hour contract, um, but I do think it was time to walk away from, from the retainer.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, you know, I thi, I think what he did was, was extraordinary in, in the toll road, uh, case. Most of the issues that we're gonna face over this next year are issues that are in common with all the other cities. And because they're in common with all the other cities, the state organizations that we are members of and pay to be members of monitor legislation, essentially do what, what he does. If the need arises, if there's an issue that affects only San Clemente, I can see the need of us, you know, bringing them in on that case to consult, but most of these issues will be, uh, the same issues that every, every other city faces, and we can use those services of the Cal Cities and other organizations to monitor, uh, to get reports. Uh, I understand from our city manager that he gets reports, we haven't got him in the past, but, uh, he, he's going to relay those to us so we can get a sense of what's happening in the state capitol. Uh, I think that's sufficient. If we need him for a specialized service, we'll have him on retainer, and so I support this, this motion the way it's been drafted.
Was that a motion?
Well, just an additional comment, just to make clear, I mean, um, Mr. Apria does a lot more than just report on the status of bills and advise whether we should support or not support bills. He drives legislation. I mean, he actually got in there with Pat Bates, and they worked on that bill to protect us from the toll road, and he called people to push that forward. So, just to make clear, I mean, he's, he's got unique connections that really can benefit us. There, I can imagine there will be legislation that really does specifically affect San Clemente, specifically about coastal erosion and things like that. So I think, um, you know, um, we are gonna use him on those kind of projects, um, and, and that there is a, a lot of value there that's specifically for San Clemente. So just wanna make that point, but I think we're all on the same page here. Do, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move.
That motion is Cabral, second is James. All in favor? Aye. Okay. The item is, the staff recommendation is passed unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is Policy and Procedure 1201-11: City Council Meeting and Operating Procedures. Proposed Update Pursuant to Council's Direction of February 21st: An Update to the City Council Travel Policies to Improve Council Communication and Public Transparency.
Yeah, and, and I, I agendize this item, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we, um, that we, we table it till the next meeting, and this is as much on me as anything. I, I don't think I was clear enough in terms of what I was looking for with this policy, which is relatively minor changes, not about, not really about any additional authority for the mayor, anything like that. What I was really just trying to get at is, and we saw some of it tonight, making sure that during oral communications, we are just receptive to the public, we, we, there's not the give and take there, and that, that gets us sidetracked, that, that's our time to listen to the public comments. Later, we can agendize items and potentially move them forward. And also, um, responsive to complaints we've had from the public, where there's a lot of comments coming from the, the audience, and other people can't hear what's being discussed either by people making comments or by the council. That's really narrowly what I was, um, what I was looking for. So, uh, I, I don't think the, um, the, the proposal is exactly what I was hoping for. So let's, if everyone agrees, let's put that over and see if we can have another.
Second your motions, table.
I think we do have to talk about the travel policy, though. As long as the travel policy's coming back in, in two weeks, I'm, I'm fine with, with that. Quite honestly, I've been getting a lot of mail about our travel policy, and I truly feel that, um, any travel by any council member above something incidental, and I would call $250 probably incidental, probably should go on the consent calendar and be approved by, by the entire council. If, if that's going to come back in two weeks, I can support deferring that.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with the proposal for the travel policy, wholeheartedly, so let's make sure that's included, 100%. We just wanna have that be out in the open, people can discuss it, people can contest it. Obviously, there are situations where timing makes it, uh, so that they're not gonna have a meeting before that, but in most cases, we'll have an opportunity to have that on the consent calendar. So yes, I 100% agree that that should be part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by, no block?
No, you made the motion, I seconded your motion.
Oh, the motion to table it, okay, yeah, so, okay, is, is, all in favor of tabling? Aye. It's unanimous. Okay.
Just chiming in to say that, yes, we, we did have one, one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we should hear that even though we're tabling it, yeah.
Hi, may I, I have a presentation. Firstly, um, I noticed on the agenda that they didn't have the February 7th, 2023 policy on here, so it should, I received it from, uh, the, uh, city clerk, and I appreciate that. Next slide, please. So I brought this up at the warrant, the, when I looked on the warrant register, I saw that there was a charge. Next slide, please. And the main concern is that, um, this matter did not become, come before the council, and it should have been, and a representative was not selected to go to the conference. Next slide, please. And when we look at the United States Conference of Mayors 91st meeting, uh, July 17th, 20th, there's rates there. Next slide, please. And it kind of spells out who can go, so it wasn't just two, you know, two mayors, it could have been other city representatives, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tems as well. Next slide, please. So during COVID, the city council selected representatives at a virtual meeting for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, virtual. Next slide, please. So, okay, this is another, where they designated a voting delegate and alternate, so we had that. So basically, it was an agenda item. Next slide, please. And one of the concerns I have is that, um, Mayor Duncan joined the, uh, Mayors Against Illegal Guns in honor of the Fifth Annual National Gun Violence. However, um, he did a press release, and the, this agency, this group was not vetted, and, or properly vetted, didn't come to our city council. Next slide, please. And the reason why I say that, 'cause it lists the membership of the city and not the individual, so I, I did not include the "not" on there. So it just says City of San Clemente, and, um, so this was an organization not properly vetted. Next slide. And it says, "Which staff member was placed in the mandatory section?" And that's a concern, because there should have been someone there. So if someone knew about the city, didn't mention it, didn't, this wasn't properly vetted, and I'm really concerned about, um, how this came about, and this should have been very transparent. And then as, as well, I wanted to comment about our First Amendment rights. If Mayor Duncan is going to limit, um, collapse cheering or whatever our toxic events themselves, I think, um, one of the, we have to pay attention to the litigation that was done prior by Malamud versus the City of San Clemente, and there's concerns regarding that, and they have to, you, the city has to uphold to that. And he wrote part of that. He mentioned to me today that he wrote, um, a section about what we can do and, and we cannot do. So I hope that Mayor Duncan does not suppress or, um, suppress our First Amendment free speech rights, and, um, believe me, uh, this might be another litigation.
A few free comments, appreciate it, time's up.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I do think there are a few, there are valid points there. I think we do need to clean up, uh, who can send out a press release, what a press release can say, who, you know, who can send out what at what point. Any one of us can, can send out a, a letter under our own letterhead, uh, but we can't represent the entire city. So I think, I think, uh, Mr. Q brought up some great points there, and we should agendize, cleaning up that policy on media releases and, and letters that, that council members send out, and how they can, how they can send those out. They can represent themselves, or they can't represent the city or the council.
I think we do have a policy on the correspondence now, we did do that, but then, uh, certainly press releases or other announcements like that, which aren't specifically covered, I would support revisiting that and clarifying our policies, so I'll second that.
Is that already included in your, uh, in your policy?
Uh, that wasn't part of this item, so that would be, that would be separate.
Okay.
Is it related to this?
Separate motion to include that analysis and?
That's what it was meant to be.
Yeah, okay, and I'll second that, and you agree with it too?
No, yeah.
I think all we need is three to bring it back in the next agenda item. All right, so, did we ever, did we ever vote on that?
I don't think we did.
I don't think so, because I think we.
You did vote on it.
We did, but then we had a speaker after.
Correct, yep, yep.
Oh, we, we were just moving it to next, okay, so we're on to 9B.
9B Youth Sport Partnership Agreement Renewals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. I'll be brief, because I do believe the, the staff report's pretty extensive on, on background and what, um, staff is proposing and recommending. Um, I wanna highlight that this has been reviewed by the Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission, and staff's recommendations and the commission's recommendations align. Um, so you are, the council tonight is considering, um, awarding partnership agreements for, um, really our, our largest youth sports partners in the City of San Clemente. Um, they are, are, are primary stakeholders when it comes to using our fields, um, and there's a variety of different partnership levels. Um, it, it does recommend AYSO and Little League at the platinum level, um, with girls' softball given platinum for this spring season only. Um, I'll, I'll kind of run through each of them again very briefly. Um, AYSO and San Clemente Little League have met the platinum partnership requirements without any concern, and that is why the staff and commission recommendation is to move forward with that. We are recommending one-year agreements with these organizations with the intent to actually revamp and restructure our partnership process. It's something that, um, there's a subcommittee been formed through the commission to relook at this, and the current process is very administratively heavy on staff, um, checking residency, and it, it does take up some time. So there's a better way to do it, and that's what we're gonna look into. Any changes would come back to the council for final approval. Um, and then San Clemente Girls Softball is, is being, um, considered for a platinum level as well for this spring season only, because they actually don't meet the residency requirements. The commission considered that, that this was actually the case as well with the San Clemente Aquatics team, if the council remembers, they were just shy of the residency requirements needed, and because they are, and girls' softball is this way, because they really are a standalone organization, there's no other, um, girls' softball in San Clemente being offered, and, um, they have stated that they picked up a number of non-residents during the COVID time period, um, when a number of leagues in surrounding cities closed, so they took in a lot of other residents. Council does have the authority to make the exception to that policy. If the council chooses not to go down the exception route through a platinum partnership, um, the recommendation then from staff would be to consider gold partnership. I know that, uh, the girls' softball organization has vocalized and expressed great concern financially, how that would impact them, and, uh, the commission's feedback was, "Let's give them the opportunity to turn that around in their primary season," which is happening right now. Um, they feel confident that they can change that. If they don't, at the end of this spring season, meet the residency requirements, then they would default back to gold status, um, and at that point, um, they would receive a lower discount, but then they would also have to raise their league rates as well. Um, so that's, that's another factor to consider. And then, um, the last one is South Coast Youth Football. Um, we are also, staff are recommending, um, uh, platinum partnership from them as well, that's very cut and dry, they, they meet residency, they meet the numbers. And then finally is Elite Soccer. Um, Elite Soccer is another soccer organization in the city, and unfortunately, they do not meet, um, the residency requirements, and it's a significant difference, um, it's significantly under, it's closer to the mid-80 range, where girls' softball is, is in the high 80s. The commission actually had to review Elite Soccer twice, um, in kind of the staff review, it was determined that there were rosters that were missing from their original application, and there was concern that there, um, was maybe some, um, miscommunication or something with the organization that they needed to provide us more information. So, um, it, it turned out, and for their due diligence on staff's behalf, there were actually seven rosters that were missing from their original application, which is why, um, the, the original gold recommendation stands at this point. I know that the, the big number on this is, this is about a, a little over $1 million subsidy that the city takes on, it's a longstanding tradition, um, and an important partnership with our youth sports organizations, um, and I wanna reiterate to the council that those are really soft costs in field rental fees, um, but these come with deep discounts as well, and that's why these partnerships are so valuable also, and they do take some time to establish and, and maintain. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now, I have a couple of questions, I think I've asked these of you before. Do we have numbers for every sport, uh, that's played in San Clemente? Not just the, the football and the softball, but every sport, uh, that's played in San Clemente?
Um, that's a hard number to, to grasp. What I have is, is definite numbers in what you're seeing here tonight, um, so I, and I can quickly tell you, um, AYSO and Elite Soccer have between 1,200 and, and 1,500 players. players, just between those two soccer organizations.
I don't need it tonight, obviously, but at some point in time, can I get the numbers of how many people?
Yeah, I'll give you our best estimate, absolutely.
Do we have a best estimate, for example, of pickleball?
Roughly, yeah. That one's a little harder to track, but yes, I can get that as well.
My next question is, the soccer fields are overused, but we have one soccer field that has no lights. And I know we use them at, we use our soccer fields at night. We have a great soccer field there, but it has no lights, or it's not completed, and it's been in that stage for, since I can remember. Do you know what the status of that is, or what we're? It has lights, it has, at, it has lights already, it just, it's not graded properly, or?
You're speaking about Vista Hermosa?
Vista Hermosa.
Yeah, that's the Meadows area.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I actually briefed the, the city manager on this as well this week. So that space is intended to be developed into three youth soccer fields. At the time of Vista Hermosa opening, there was concern related to the ongoing maintenance costs that could be incurred for the, the maintenance of that space. So at the time, the city council decided to pause on developing it and kind of seeing it through. That's why the lights are up. It was almost to the finish line, and really, kind of in the 11th hour, it was decided that it was, it would be more fiscally responsible to hold off on developing it. But that said, it is master planned, and it could be picked up at any point in time. I will share with the council, staff are considering that through the CIP program for the next coming budget year as well, so council could take consideration for that as well.
All right.
I have a couple of questions. When we rent fields with lighting, are, is the lighting costing us more than the rental of the field? Have we done any study on that?
So great question. Thank you, Councilmember James. So it's $15 an hour. It's unlikely it's costing more, but that, we do need to do a cost of services study. That fee, that fee has not been updated in well over 10 years, is my guess.
Can we study that, City Manager?
That's something else. That's on, on BPR's radar for, again, the next budget year, to do a cost of services study, and we'd like to do that annually moving forward.
And then my next question's kind of off-topic from this, but are we giving San Clemente residents priority into junior lifeguards at this point?
I am, I'm happy to tell you that at the next council meeting, we'll be hosting a public hearing regarding fees and actually policies for junior lifeguards, so.
Thank you.
Coming soon.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a quick question. Any, do you want to say anything? There's a lot of feedback that I'm getting about the wet fields and players not being, baseball's being canceled for three or four weeks because of this. Is there anything you would like to say on that?
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilmember Emire. That is, that's a frustrating experience for parents. I can, I can share, it's frustrating on the staff's side as well. Field maintenance and closing fields is, it's more than somebody sitting in an office and deciding that there's too much rain hitting the ground. I can assure you that our maintenance services staff walk those fields. Anytime it rains, they are out on foot, walking the fields, every single one of them, alongside our, our maintenance contractors. What we see in San Clemente is unfortunately, we have really tough soil. I think our residents know that. There's oftentimes a lot of clay in them, so the drainage is really awful. And I, and I will share that, you know, the other thing we battle is, most of our fields were not built with adequate drainage to really solve the problem, so everything takes longer to drain. And while the fields, if you look on, from the fence, will look like they should be ready to play, a lot of times there's standing water, and there's large puddles. And ultimately, playing on that soggy field is going to cause more damage in the long run than it is to just close it for an additional one to two days. So again, with today's rainstorm, we're going to wait and see what it looks like overnight, what kind of water we take in. And then our fields crew is, stands ready to go out and mow as soon as the turf is, is ready to take that. Again, we don't want to damage the fields prematurely either. And then, you know, there's ball fields, and then there's soccer fields. So the other element with a, with a baseball field is the clay and the dirt around it, both on the foul lines kind of, and also within the infield. So, and those can tend to pool with water as well. But I know maintenance is, we're going to do our best to get them open as, as quickly as possible. I know that this weekend is important for our Little League players, as well as our girls softball, because it is their primary season. So, so we'll, we'll be addressing it tomorrow, first thing.
And I don't know if this is you, Samantha, or City Manager, are we looking at, I guess, revisiting the policies about field closure, just to give the public a greater kind of visibility of what those standards are, so that they can understand there is a process, this is formulaic, it's not just a random person's opinion?
Yeah.
Are we, am I right that we're looking at bringing that back too?
We are. That's something this, the sports subcommittee is looking at with the commission as well. Many cities have a mudline policy or a field closure policy, and that's something we lack. And I think that would help us in our efforts as well.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. One, one, just final question.
Yes.
If the league is not on here, like say Surf Soccer, is, is that because they don't have enough players, or the residency isn't there, or?
Good question. It could be that they're not a nonprofit. They are a frequent renter, so we have a couple of different buckets that an organization can, could fall in, and they fall into that bucket, that frequent renter.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move staff, staff and Beaches, Parks and Recreation.
We do have one speaker.
Okay.
First speaker is Concerned Resident. The Recreation Sports Partnership Agreements you have been provided have a clause for field use and parking, number, item seven. It states, when using a city neighborhood or community park, the organization must communicate parking limitations to their participants. The organization must manage the use of space by coordinating its games and practice schedules to the available parking at each site. It goes on to specify that the organization must allow adequate time between games for players leaving the courts to vacate parking spaces for those coming in. As you can see from the video, the organizations that the city has allowed in San G have not complied. The Recreation Sports Partnership Agreements you have been provided have a clause for violation warning procedure and disciplinary policy. It clearly states the, the procedure the city is to follow to bring the organization into compliance. As you can see from this continuing loop, I could do videos all night long, but I don't know how to add more. As you can see from the video, the city has failed to bring the organizations into compliance. Staff and BPNR Commission recommend that you authorize the BPNR director to execute the sport partnership agreements for each organization. I hope you agree. I hope that you will, will recommend everything that has been presented, but with two caveats. Require the BPNR director clearly communicate the field use and parking requirements. And require the BPR director to comply with her duty to enforce the violation warning procedure and disciplinary policy, so that the unsafe conditions you are watching do not happen again. These are the words of our interim city manager, Mr. Joyce. No voice.
We acknowledge that we can do a better job of managing contracts. We can do a better job scheduling those events. We acknowledge that we can do better.
Can you hear it?
No.
He's saying that he acknowledges that the city has not.
We can do a better job.
You're not hearing him now?
No.
Basically, he was saying that he acknowledges that the city has not been enforcing the clear and unambiguous language of violating the parking requirements and causing unsafe condition in city streets. And that he vowed that he would work on that. Mr. Hall, will you please commit to continue with Mr. Joyce's pledge and require staff to comply with the clear and unambiguous conditions of these sport partnerships agreements? The safety of residents on Via San Gregorio and the families that are being forced to walk in the middle of the street needs to be a priority for the city.
Thank you. And more speakers on this item as well?
One more speaker, AQ.
This is just, I know, I know. No, basically, you know, I support this, the Concerned Resident, because she lives with a, you know, 24/7 and, or at least not 24/7, but the whole day. And, you know, I'm really for safety and, you know, public safety, so I think that really needs to be looked in and addressed. But one of the things that Director Wiley mentioned was that she mentioned residency, residency for the partnerships. And what is residency determined in the City of San Clemente? Because when it, when we apply residency for the homeless, it's totally different, right? They don't have to prove residency. It's just there. So I'm just kind of concerned about that, of how residency is defined in our city, and maybe the city attorney can opine on that matter, or Ms. Wiley, but it just, she mentioned it, and it was like, wait a minute, a little light bulb turned on. But anyways, thank you so much, I appreciate.
Thank you. Did we have a motion in a second already?
I started, I started, but there was a comment. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept staff and our Beaches, Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission Recommendations 1, 2, 3, and 4 as delineated in the staff report.
Okay, it's no block. Second is Emire. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous?
Mayor, on this next item, since I have a financial stake, I'm going to step down from here.
Okay.
A little technical lesson on the Brown Act. If you're an advisory consultant and your contract's up for discussion, you can remain in the room to answer questions. So I'll stay in the room, but not participate.
Thank you very much. And if we have, are you going to do a staff presentation, City Manager?
Yes, for sure.
Okay. And also, if, for anyone in the audience that would like to speak about the city attorney or city attorney matters, this is probably your best opportunity.
And I'll just announce the title. Appointment of Burke Williams and Sorensen to provide city attorney services to the City of San Clemente.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, it is the responsibility, of course, of the elected officials to appoint the legal counsel for the city. And staff is seeking whether or not the city council would like to approve and authorize the city manager to execute Contract C 23-14, binding between the City of San Clemente and Burke Williams Sorensen LLP to provide legal services for the City of San Clemente, and to further approve and authorize the city manager to administer an immediate work transition between Best Bestin Krieger and Burke Williams Sorensen LLP, and present a longer-term transition plan to the city council at a future date. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Smith for all that he's done for me in the short time that I've been here. Very warm welcome, and caught me up very quickly on the legal issues facing the city, so I'd like to take just a minute and thank him for his, for his help in helping me accommodate, or assimilate to some of the things that are happening in the city. So with, with no further questions, Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions before we get comments?
We can speak before?
Well, are you going to speak to the item, or ask questions of the city manager?
I'll speak to the item.
Okay, then let's hear from the, the public, I guess, first.
First speaker is Kathy Ward, followed by Bob Baker.
How do you spell her name?
Good evening, Council.
This person.
I understand tonight is the last night for our city attorney, Scott Smith, and representation with Best Bestin Krieger. And I do, I, I'm sorry that the representative from Burke's Williams and Sorensen is not here tonight. I want to wish them well. But what I want to do tonight is just honor our city attorney on his last meeting, and talk about, as a council member, we picked Best Bestin Krieger in 2015. I was a council member for maybe two or three months. It was very important to me that we had good governance and our city was covered legally, and that we followed city policies and best policies for how to operate as a council for, from League of Cities, California Cities. And in doing so, we picked, Scott Smith is our city attorney, and we not only picked him, but we picked a team. We picked Mal Richardson, and we picked Jeffrey Dunn to be our litigator. And what a team they have been for the last eight and a half years. We didn't know what was going to be coming our way, but their successful representation took us through the issue of vacation rentals. And not only vacation rentals exploding in our city and people being kicked out of their homes, also sober living homes, where we had an operator that decided San Clemente was their base. And they weren't actually really treating people, they were just housing people and taking, really taking advantage. And they were ultimately raided by the FBI. But your successful representation helped us regulate those when all other law firms told us there was nothing that we could do. And we knew better, we knew that we had to do better for our residents, and that's not what we do in San Clemente. Sober living homes, they're now regulated also, and we successfully did that and survived legal challenges. The other main, other than day-to-day activities, was the toll road through our city. And that was six, six and a half years, I believe. I heard a little bit earlier today, I just happened to catch the beginning of the council meeting, where there was a comment that there's only an appeal left for fees for Best Bestin Krieger. And I thought it was a little bit sour grapes to say that they should not pursue those. We already have an agreement, the city council with BBK, to, to be able to recoup those fees, and I think that's, that's their right to do. And they're doing it after a successful conclusion of, of their campaign. But the toll road through San Clemente, you had the, you had thousands of San Clemente residents that were wishing you well and behind you, and I think they felt good, and they felt good that the council was really fighting that toll road, and that we had a chance. And we only had that chance because of the framework of what you did. I'm not the only one tonight. I wanted to say that former Mayor Tim Brown could not be here tonight, and he wanted to give.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. I knew that three minutes wouldn't be enough. Kathy, thank you.
Thank you, Scott Smith.
Evening, City. Evening, City Council. I too want to thank Scott personally for his tremendous work for all the citizens of San Clemente for years now. Scott and Mal have done great work for people that don't even know who Scott and Mal are. So thank you both for that. They've got a whole team behind them at BBK. I don't know whether you've ever been up there and met them. It's a very, very professional, smart group of people up there, not just Scott and Mal, it's a whole team up there. And I'm going to, Kathy hit on the main points that were huge for the City of San Clemente, enormous. VRBOs and drug rehabs were huge problems. Those guys fixed it. It's a great thing. They were there with us for the toll road, as you talked about, and the housing element. They took grief over all the lawsuits, and they took a lot of grief from actually the people who were filing the lawsuits. I don't have a good analogy for that, but that's an odd place to be. People come, anyway. I don't often watch these meetings on TV, but sometimes you do, and I watched, it's Red Cross Month, so I happened to find out there's a Red Cross-sponsored blood drive right here, April 5th. So there's 27 appointments available. I hope everybody in the room right now will show up and do that. Samantha Wiley spoke just a minute ago. Samantha is a tremendous city employee. That woman is a great communicator. She took over the golf course, all the mess with the reservation system, all the yakking and moaning from people that actually, it's a much better system now. She answered all their questions. She does the same thing for the tennis people. She's a tremendous city employee. The Homeless Committee, I hear we're going to solve homelessness, and that'll be great, because then we'll have a Nobel Prize committee here in San Clemente. That'd be great. And I would love them to tackle world peace right after. Soon as they're done with homelessness, world peace would be next. So thank you very much.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Bob. All right. Any other comments?
I have a couple of comments.
Well, any other public comments?
Public comments?
No more public comments.
Okay. Yeah, we'll start down here.
Yeah, I, I just really want, Scott Smith, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for the extraordinary, I think extraordinary, legal services that you performed here for the City of San Clemente for years. You've defended the city admirably, and our city should be very thankful for the work you've done for us. While there were too many issues to mention, and I think a lot of them have been mentioned already, I think you and BB and K have excelled, and I think it's noteworthy to mention, the one that's been mentioned already, the toll road, that was about to cut through our city. The, the work on your, this issue demonstrated your ability to manage complex legal, politic, and political issues, guide our elected officials, and ultimately prevail against the TCA. issues, guide our elected officials, and ultimately prevail against the TCA. For that legal issue alone, the city of San Clemente owes you our heartfelt thanks and our appreciation. But I also wanted to thank you for putting up with all of us elected officials and the public. It's not an easy job, and we all know that, but you've done it honorably and with grace. And for that, you deserve the city's thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few things to say. You know, when you sit out there and you look at this dais, you think you know it all. And you really don't. Until you get a peek under the tent, you have no idea. It's easy for people to come in, criticize council members, criticize the city attorney. But I lived next door to a drug house, and I knew the hell that living next door to a sober living house was. And I'm going to give Mr. Baker and Ms. Ward credit. They, along with Scott Smith, developed an ordinance which has pretty much killed drug houses, sober living houses in our town. And, but boy, when I'm sitting out there, and every day I was living the hell of a sober living house, it feels like they didn't, they weren't doing anything. But they were. It was like, they were like a duck going across the water. You know, you don't see a lot above the water line, but there's a hell of a lot going on I was happy to get on council and become a friend of Kathy Ward. And I was happy to become your friend as well, Scott. Bob, we'll never be friends. You know I'm joking, right? You're not. The, Scott, you did amazing work. There were evil entities trying to put a toll road through the middle of this town. And we stopped them cold. We absolutely stopped them cold. And it was you, it was you that did it. Mark Apprea played a big role. The council members that were on council before I was, played a big role. Citizens like Amanda Q. played a big role. But Scott, you were the quarterback, and you were the one that when we write the history of San Clemente, it should be you that get a huge credit for being that quarterback. Scott, you'll forever be a friend, and you're one of the most decent human beings I've ever met. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah. Anyone else?
Well, I echo everything that they said. You have done amazing, amazing things for the city. I think one thing that should also be mentioned is that in our meetings together, as you go over these issues, Scott is a man of character. And he truly, truly cares for the city. He truly cares for the residents of the city. And I know even after tonight, he will continue to do so. He is a good, good man. And I just want to say thank you for all that you have done for the city and for its residents.
I want to echo the comments that have been made. Scott's always been accessible with a quick response and a quick answer. You could ask for more from a city attorney, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Well, you know, rounded out, Scott has been just a champion for San Clemente. The champion we needed, and a resident nonetheless, right? You can't put a price tag on the work you've done and how you've saved the cities from these threats that we've faced. And I, you know, I just can't thank you enough. It's been great getting to know you, Scott. And you are a brilliant attorney. Any one of us that knows the work you've done, you find ways of legally accomplishing things that others I don't think could, right? So your brilliance as an attorney, though, is only overmatched by what a great person you are. You're just an excellent, well-meaning, good-hearted, caring, as Mark said, person. And we will miss you here as our city attorney. I know we'll see you around town, and I wish you the very, very best of luck in all of your future endeavors and your family as well, because you've been put through a lot here. No person and no attorney should be put through this. But it's a testament to your strength of character, really, that regardless of all of the slings and arrows, you just kept the line, you kept defending the city, you let it, at least in public, roll off your back. And this city is much, much better off for the time that you spent as our city attorney, Scott. All right? So take care. Thank you.
So I have a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute contract number C-23-14, bind between the city of San Clemente and Burke Williams and Sorenson, LLP, providing for legal services with the city of San Clemente. Number two, approve and authorize the city manager to administer an immediate work transition between Best, Bestin, Krieger, and Burke Williams and Sorenson, LLP, and to present a longer-term transition plan to the city council at a future date.
Second.
Okay. James with the motion to approve the staff recommendation. Second is no block. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it is unanimous.
Next up is Oral Communications, Part Two. The first speaker is Sarah Martin.
Hi, all congressmen. Thank you for the time and everyone else here.
Thank you for the promotion.
Okay, so I'm a resident of San Clemente. I'm a mother of four. By the way, the girls got fourth, ended up fourth in state for the girl soccer team, in 17th in the nation.
Yes.
And it was taken, like, the last, like, it was 20 minutes overtime, and it was a call and a PK. It was, yeah, anyways.
Yes.
Yeah, but, okay. One of those was my daughter on that team. So, all right. So I, I'm a long generation of Californian, sixth generation. The ocean runs through my blood, and I think it's really important that we protect our local assets. I also took care of my elderly grandmother in a wheelchair when she was older, and I understand the little joys that it brings to bring an elderly person to the beach. And we don't have any other beaches besides North Beach. That is that. We could go to the pier, and you have to go long ways. North Beach, you can park, easy access. Being a mother of four, also, you've got kids on your hip. North Beach is a place that would be really easy to go to, not all the other areas. So I think it's really important. That's one issue, okay? Other is the wedding venue, you guys are all. And if we want to be loving and compassionate and be able to help people and pay everyone good wages so they can put food on the table for their kids, city employees and so on, then we need to have city revenue. And if we cut off people from wanting to visit our town, then we won't have that city revenue, or it will be extremely diminished. So, for instance, the wedding venue down at North Beach. I personally have seen couples getting their pictures, newlyweds, and them being, like, harassed and yelled at when they're trying to get their pictures taken. And one of my friends down there said that during the ceremony, somebody went up and a transient, who was not from the community, that's another issue, yelling that she hopes that they had a terrible life in the middle of the ceremony. What is that going to do to people who are visiting our town? And like, if we have our own residents that don't want to, like, go down to North Beach, what about everybody else who comes and looks at that beach, right? What are they going to, are they going to want to come back? My husband had a business venue down in San Diego, got the guests at Lamp District, and then we went over to Coronado as well. And huge difference. There was feces, there was, literally, there was a guy with this big machete thing in front of a guard, and he, yeah, he didn't, the guard didn't do anything, obviously, because he was scared. My husband was on edge after that, the whole night, like, this is not a safe place. Coronado, beautiful, pristine, people were enjoying the parks. I would definitely go back there, and I would do everything I can to not go back to the Gaslamp District in San Diego. And I think we really need to be careful, like, that people that come and visit our town are wanting to come back again, and the face of our town is really important. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate that.
Final speaker is Concerned Resident.
Thank you, Councilmember James, for stating the fact that it is the city council's responsibility to ensure the residents' quality of life. I appreciate that acknowledgement. I was going to play pickleball noise, and now she's left, but I didn't bring it up because an ex-councilwoman who was here absolutely finds that noise offensive and stated so during council meetings when I have played pickleball noise. So, no noise tonight, guys. I think you know what I'm talking about. So I'll just leave you with this. The quality of life for San Clemente residents applies to all equally. I just want to remind you that you took care of the quality of life for people around San Luis Rey Park, but you have not taken care of the quality of life for people who live near San Geronimo Park. Thank you.
And no further.
No further public comments.
Okay. Onto reports. Any reports from commissions or committees?
We don't have anything for transportation and health.
No. No? Okay. How about council subcommittee updates? Okay. Individual council members, any one have any comments?
I have a couple of things. I'd like to make a motion on local vendors. And as local vendors apply for business within the city, I think local vendors could get, should have at least a 10% break on contracts. If they come within 10% of a, what I'll call, a foreign vendor, a vendor from outside of the city, that business should go to the local vendor. We recently had that with West Coast Arborist and Rod's Tree Service. So I'm going to make a motion that staff study and bring back a proposal to give preference to local vendors.
So I'll support that.
Can I have a third?
I'll give you a third.
The third to bring the staff report back.
Bring the staff report back.
Is it clear? Is that direction clear? Okay.
My sec-
Just to catch the third.
Enmeyer is the third.
Enmeyer was the third. Thank you.
And the second thing I have is related to that, actually. So we're seeing, and I, you know, I wasn't clairvoyant, I wasn't particularly smart, but I just knew it was going to occur. West Coast Arburists, we see them adding charges. And that was their reputation when they came to town, and now that's what they're doing to us. So I would like to make a proposal and have staff come back that anything above and beyond their stated contract, that all the extra charges, we will contract with an alternate vendor. City manager, is that possible?
We would definitely look into that.
So if I can have a second and a third on that?
I'll second it.
Third on?
Yeah, I'll third.
Thank you.
Does the motion include just for all contracts or just Western Arburists?
I like that.
That's an issue across the board with a lot of contracts.
I like that. I'll accept that friendly amendment. All contracts.
So at this point, the motion is to see whether it's possible to, when we have a contract with one vendor and there's additional services beyond the contract, if it's possible to contract with a different vendor to perform those additional services.
Exactly. And the last thing I have is, I should have picked this up during the consent calendar, weed abatement in the consent calendar. City manager, do you agree that that shouldn't be on the weed, on the consent calendar? That should just be in ordinance, and that's just be something we're doing?
Can you repeat that?
Weed abatement.
Oh, yeah.
Please, please.
I believe that should be part of the budget process on an annual basis. We do that on a regular basis.
I don't think it needs to come back on the consent calendar. So would that be an ordinance we would have for that, or that would be in the budget?
I think it would be part of the annual budget process, because the council does adopt that by resolution, of course.
So I have a motion to put it in the budget process.
I'll second that, and I'll agree with that.
Thank you.
It's something that comes up every year. We approve every year.
Yeah. Why are we doing that? That's all I have.
It's not like we're not going to do the weed abatement.
Right, right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments? Yep.
I have a couple items. Number one, you started off the meeting by talking about Buena Vista and the effort that took place there. And I would like to see our city develop sort of a more effective incident system command type response. And I'd like to instruct the city manager to report back on a specific protocol for emergency disasters. We had the mudslide, we've also got, right next to San Onofre, we've got a president going toe-to-toe discussing nuclear war with Putin. We have potentially some very serious issues affecting not only our city, but the region. And I'd like to make sure we have our critical incident command apparatus clearly and strongly in place. And I'm not sure what all that entails, but-
Did we discuss that earlier, or was this encompassed in what we discussed?
Is there something above and beyond?
I'm not sure we, I don't know if we have clear direction on that. Maybe we do.
We do now.
We do now.
We do now.
I would include what Steve said, to the extent that he outlined.
Yes, training is important.
Okay. And I think as part of it, we should be looking for a partnership or assistance from the feds, from the state, to help us get a program that is adequate for our city. I think that would be something they have resources for and can hopefully help us with.
Yes. And Mayor and council, just so you know, I'm actually met today with the commander from the sheriff's department. They actually just hired a new position to help cities put their emergency preparedness in place, and he offered to have, to help us set up our program based on that. So it was very good timing. We talked about this, and I think a lot of it, of course, is because of what happened this last week. But he offered that, and so I'll make sure to include those opportunities that we have to work with the sheriff's department as well.
Just to note that, I mean, we used to get money from San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station for our emergency preparedness. That was part of the deal. That went away, and we lost that part-time position. I think that we need to revisit with them and say, hey, you guys are storing nuclear waste on our border, you at least owe us money so that we can help set up an emergency operation program.
They also disconnected the siren system in town as well.
They're, yeah, they're, anyway, yes.
Anyway, thank you. The second item I have is just a suggestion that, a suggestion that we consider as a city council. I know other cities do this. They have council retreats where we get together as a council and not discuss agenda items per se, but sort of where we are as a city, how to work together, not violating the Brown Act, but in a public arena, just to, you know, we've got new council members and just sort of to get acquainted, because it's difficult to discuss issues that are not on the agenda without potentially violating the Brown Act. So it'd be nice to have a forum where we can have a roundtable discussion as a council, with the community being involved, and just sort of have a, and I know other cities have done this, and-
I like the idea. Can we do that?
I think it's possible.
City manager, have you seen this done in other cities?
Yeah, most cities do have some form of a council retreat. It's a goal setting and some of those kinds, so absolutely.
But it's public, the public has to be invited.
Yes, the public has to be invited. That is correct.
So it has to be noticed as well?
That is correct. It is a notice public meeting. But it's a different, it's somewhat of a different format. It's more of a goal setting, talking about things like the organizational chart in the city and how that works, that there aren't typical, regular city council items, but really important for the council to understand how the structure of the city works. So I think they're very-
I like that.
Is that a motion?
That's a recommendation.
I'd second that.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a third?
Yeah, me, we're, yeah, we're on.
And then the last item I have is, I'd like to propose a, that this council consider a resolution concerning- a resolution concerning Assembly Bill 1073, which deals with education. It's not really our wheelhouse, but it involves our parents and our kids. It's basically a bill that says if our local school board decides that there's an issue that they don't want the teachers to teach, let's say transgenderism, CRT, certain pornography that's been complained about in the required reading, that the city, that the school board has authority to deal with that issue at the local level. The bill, this bill says that the local school board can't make changes without state approval. And it's sort of a local control issue. I passed out a draft copy of a resolution just so my colleagues would have that. And I'd like us to at least consider it.
I'd support that.
AB or SP? I missed that.
It's AB 1078.
And I have a draft copy of, I've distributed to my colleagues earlier. I'll give it to the city clerk for distribution to whoever needs a copy. I'd just like to at least have a discussion on it and see if that's something we can support.
Mr. No Block, did you write this?
No, this is coming, most of this language from the county office of education, which is also concerned about AB 1078. I didn't draft it. I tweaked it a little bit.
I'll give a third on that.
That's all I have.
Who is the second?
Cabral.
Cabral, thank you.
That's all I have.
Only comment is that as we get into the budget season here and we think about allocating money for security to address the homelessness, I think we've got to be cognizant about our spending here, right? This is not an ever-ending bucket. So, if we're going to go down this road, we're going to probably be cutting other programs and probably cutting other potential projects. So, we need to be very mindful through this process. It's very expensive to hire a security company, but it very well could be worth the investment for the residents and their quality of life. And so, let's keep that in mind as we think about how we have allocated our budget towards other expenses and just the reality of the limitations of our budget. But to me, nothing's more important than quality of life for our residents, so it's probably worth potentially cutting some other things in order to do that. So, that's all. You'll support quality of life as the number one priority, I know. Okay, so that is all I have. Any comments from the city manager or city attorney? City attorney first, yes.
Yeah, just, I have to say thank you for those kind words from earlier and for the opportunity. When I signed on, I was excited to serve my community. I had no idea there'd be so many thrills. Those are all mentioned earlier. They're thankful for my colleagues, too, and for this council's leadership and your predecessors. Amazing staff. And so, it's been an honor. I don't want to linger. My successor and I will figure out which of us will be here Monday for your special meeting because we'll make sure you've got coverage there. Do want to congratulate you on that choice. I think I was associating into projects with lawyers from Burke Williams &amp; Sorensen before I passed the bar. So, my association with them, their leadership, their skills and capability has been very, very impressive. So, congratulations on that. And I look forward to helping my successor in her role any way I can. So, thanks for that.
Mayor and Council, I just have two contracts to let you. Oh, sorry. Mayor and Council, I just have two contracts to make you aware of. First is a contract with Environmental Compliance Experts, LLC for providing annual hazardous materials business plan preparation and submission for the city's water utilities in the amount of $18,000. And a contract with Vortex Industries, LLC for providing door replacements at the water reclamation plant in the amount of $27,700. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion for adjournment. The next regular, the next special council meeting is scheduled to take place on March 27, 2023. Regular business meeting will begin at 7:00 P.M. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente, California.
And are we good with that, with just a special meeting, and then we'll do the regular meeting from there?
Yes, if I could, please just read that. We will adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting to be held on May 20, excuse me, March 27 at 7:00 P.M. So, we'll call an adjourned regular.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I think it needs to be a special meeting because it will include agenda items that were not on here tonight. So, I think we'll notice it that way.
So, my verbiage was correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Amazing.
Yes. Technically, you're adjourning this meeting to the 4th because that's your next regular meeting, so you should do that.
Okay, so we got to do that, too. Well, in addition, I'll do a friendly amendment to that motion. We're also adjourning to the next regular city council meeting that's scheduled to take place on April 4, 2023. Close session will begin at 5:00 P.M. Regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 P.M. And the meeting, like the meeting on Monday, will take place in council chambers at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente. Second is James. Well, no, you moved it. I'm just doing a friendly amendment. I'll be a second to yours. We're all in favor? Aye? Okay, it's unanimous.